Is here present Sean Woods?
Here.
And I am present as well. I'm going to hand it over to...
I just want to mention one thing, not to hand it over to me, please. There are agendas on the table there as well as two sets of presentations. The first one are the district curriculum and student services slides. Those were in your packet from last time's meeting. But for those in the audience who were not here, there's a set of those. And then the second are the elementary school presentations, including the early steps preschool, which nobody else will have.
All right. I'm going to hand it... Third, elementary and district reports. FY19 superintendent's recommended budget. The first item is district curriculum. I'm going to hand it over to superintendent.
Thank you very much. So we are very excited to be here for our second night to present to you the recommended budget from the school department for fiscal year 19. We made great progress the last time that we met. And tonight, we're going to pick back up with district curriculum and student services. And then, as time allows, we will start to work through elementary. But we will assess as we go. But we have some very exciting presentations for you tonight. I'm going to say, as I said the other night, that the process, I think there's more people here who might want to hear a little bit about the process. But the process that we used to get to the point of presenting this budget was very collaborative in nature. We worked with the admin council and the larger district leadership team to try to look at our priorities in framing, really, in student learning and student outcomes and trying to make sure that whatever it is that we present to you this evening is tied directly to that mission of our school system, which is to ensure that all students learn. So I think as we go along, you'll hear, especially tonight, many of the things that we're working on are really framed with that perspective and looking at evidence-based practice, looking at ways that we can maximize growth, not just for our students but for our educators. That will come through, I think, a lot in what we talk about tonight. So I'm not going to take up too much time more, but I would like to hand it over to Dr. Teresa McGinnis, who is our assistant superintendent for teaching, learning, and assessment, who will provide an overview of the district's curriculum.
Great, thank you. And welcome, everyone. As many of you who might have been here last week might recall, my colleagues framed our work with technology that we use for infrastructure in the district, buildings, all of the land, everything that we need to make the students' learning experience the best that we can in the district. So this week, what Kathy Damaris and I are going to show you is sort of the heart of what's happening in the school, and that is curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and how we teach our students. We have some curriculum coordinators here, and we also have our elementary principals here who are going to present in more detail. At the beginning, this presentation is more of a high-level summary of, again, curriculum instruction and assessment at the district level, and more specifics will be shared individually by each school shortly. So the first slide just shows the functional area of district curriculum, which includes myself and a cadre of fine curriculum coordinators that are listed there from literacy, math, technology, ELA, et cetera, that make up the department. What we did is we structured our budget and our goals under the strategic initiatives that Superintendent Goldston had shared with everybody, I think it was in December. And the specific one that we are structuring our work under is the strategic objective to provide all students with a rigorous, relevant, standards-based curriculum throughout our core instructional program. So this, for FY19 and going forward, these bullet points underneath, starting with assessment, are toward that strategic objective. So the first one listed there is adopting I-Ready, which is an integrated blended learning program for personalized learning in grades K through nine next year. It's both diagnostic to see where the student is at that moment in time. It gives instructional practices for intervention, and it also allows us to monitor the progress of the student throughout the year. So from September, when our students arrive, until June. It's going to give us a lot more data to make sure that we're targeting our instruction in a more personalized and individualized way. So that is one thing that you'll see in the budget asks coming forward. The second thing there is the elementary standards-based report card implementation. A large group of teachers, over 30, have been working hard this year in developing a standards-based report card for K to five next year. The fall next year, we're also going to have a study team for the middle school, but we're actually going to implement a standards-based report card starting in September of this year. And what that means is parents and students will have a document that tells them where they are working toward or progressing towards each specific standard, rather than an arbitrary grade or arbitrary topic area that's very specific to the standards. We're going to be vetting this to the teachers in the next two weeks, and then also to the parents before the end of June, so that everybody will be familiar with this before even entering into the summer. So we'll give you more information on that afterwards in the presentation.
Can I ask a little question?
Yeah, absolutely.
When were you planning to roll this out at the middle school? Because I know that would take a...
So, yeah, so next year, that's FY19, that school year, there'll be a study team at the middle school, like we've done for the last two years at the elementary level, to see what is, what's necessary at the middle school, because it likely won't look like the elementary, but it might have parts thereof. It may be more likely to be a combination of grades and standards.
Okay. So would that, would that be implemented, you think, in the beginning of the...
FY20?
1920.
That's, that's the goal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Another important objective that we want to be met is the addition of two more elementary coaches. Most of you know, we have a literacy coach and a math coach this year who have been phenomenal teachers, and I'll share with you in a few moments from professional development, have appreciated that type of embedded professional development coaching, nonevalutive, just there to give answers to them, to support them, and to serve as classroom aids in implementation of curriculum. The fourth bullet down there is called Atlas Curriculum Mapping Tool, and that's K-12. All of our curriculum coordinators are working this spring to take our present curriculum maps, which are in varying shapes of completion, and upload them into this tool, this software platform. And then, we're filling in the gaps where there may be gaps in various curriculum. And over the summer, we're going to have groups of teachers that then look at what we've done, perfected, long-term, as in a year or so. There'll be parts of it that every parent can go on and see the shell of it. So you'll know, oh, in first grade, our children are learning this, that, and the other thing. So that's a, that's a district-wide implementation tool, started this spring, and then next year, we'll unload it to teachers and unveil it. And finally, on this slide, the implementation of articulated social-emotional learning program, K to five. So another cadre of dedicated teachers have been working on that, starting last spring and then through this school year. Again, we'll be vetting it to teachers at upcoming faculty meetings and to parents at PTOs before the end of June as well. We are down to selection of between two different programs, but both of them, whichever one we go with, are research evidence-based, and we're just going to see which one fits best. So that is money in the budget next year needed for that implementation of that.
Can I ask two little questions?
You may.
For the Atlas Curriculum Mapping, when do you think a parent would be able to access that information?
I'd be guessing right now, because teachers haven't seen it yet. I mean, we're still putting it in.
Eighteen months away. It's fine, I just wondered.
I would say, if I had to guess, I would say by the end of next school year, we'll have the framework of it. I would say that would be a goal of ours, for sure. Before that, one of the other things that we've been working on, especially at the elementary level, is brochures. We have some makeshift, but we're still figuring out our curriculum, so that a parent could have a general brochure by grade level of what is my child doing in math this year, et cetera. So that's something we're going to be working with in tandem next year.
Wonderful.
And also, just realistically, though, I think when you go through all the curriculum, there might be, a majority might be done by the end of next year, but there might be others that are in really great shape, and so we didn't prioritize them. That might be a little bit longer. So I think one of the things that you guys will do is put together, like, a schedule, in essence, like, year one, these are the curriculum that are available, year two, these are the ones. So there's always a guarantee as to what's coming online.
Okay.
But all of them at once would be...
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, for the SEL, is that going to be implemented, K to five, in the fall of 18?
Yes. Yes. We've actually changed our professional development days. This year, we had one in November and one in January, in fact, the past two years. And what we've done is we put three at the beginning of school year before our children get back, so that we can have a concentrated amount of professional development. So teachers feel equipped to start the year, and it's not something that flows out in October or November. So we've shifted that, so that we can provide more support across the board before school To continue, for district curriculum, increased funding for classroom libraries, K to eight, to support literacy instruction, improvement of student outcomes, to expand and ensure cohesive professional development offerings. That's always a focus. And in a couple of, in the slides down, I'll give you specifically some of the stuff that we're, the teachers have asked for for next year. We're incorporating TenMarkz, which is instructional software that we are piloting right now in grades three to five. And next year, we want to have it K to nine. And it serves for remediation, for extending the curriculum. Students can do it at home, and do do it at home. But we need professional development around that as well, so it's just another tool. Budget for continued implementation of our multi-yeared FLESS program, and Adam is here tonight if we have any questions around that. But we're going from K to grade two next year, so we're increasing that. And then finally, foundations, which is, we need more job-embedded professional development, which we've had the last two years. And we're going to continue. Right now, this year, grade two is having all of that professional development. Next year, it will be kindergarten. So by the end of next year, K one and two teachers will be supported in phonics instruction through foundation. So there's going to be a cohesion that goes across. But when you see all of this that I just mentioned in two slides, that's a lot of work for teachers. So I hope that parents appreciate, I know they appreciate, but recognize the work that it takes outside of the classroom and the dedication to learn all of this. So the embedded coaching and the professional development is key to all of this, to make us successful. Some accomplishments, hard to get them on a slide, so we've decided to put it district-wide in one, and then elementary, and then finally secondary. And I know that our principals will probably be cheerleading some of these and some more that we didn't include on the slides. All of our, the first one is all of our principals completed, or are in the midst of completing some of them, a research-based course entitled Analyzing Teaching for Student Results that emphasizes skills mastery and supports the broader district learning goals. This is an ideal, it's eight full days that curriculum coordinators and principals are spending, which is a lot of time, studying instruction, assessment, and how to better teach our children. And what we're going to do at the end of this year and in the summer in our leadership retreat is take from that, what is the area of focus that we want to do to support our teachers? So all of us will be on the same page in terms of our knowledge and background and going forward with the strategic plan. We'll tie it into that. Also, an accomplishment this year, as I mentioned earlier, is the Atlas, the district administrator's preparing the curriculum, which is taking hours and hours of time, so that next year we can share with the teachers and expand it. We have an increased co-teaching model with Kathy Damaris will speak a little bit more to this in a few minutes, but it's been outstanding. We have program evaluation that is currently undergoing of our ELL program to see where are the needs. Dr. Berta Alina Rojas is doing this evaluation currently. And next year, we have our CPR, which has now changed, another acronym. Kathy, what is it?
Tiered Focus Monitoring.
Now it's called tiered focus monitoring, so TFM, it will be instead of Co-ordinator Review. So in preparation for that, we're getting an outside consultant to take a look at our ELL program. To that end, this morning, I spent the half a day in a Boston public school, K to 12 school, actually, in Brighton, with Yvonne Andara, who is our curriculum coordinator for ELL, and with one of our ELL teachers, studying how they deliver instruction for their ELLs, which was phenomenal. So part of that work, we'll share it at a later date, but is going to be sharing that with Berta Alina, too, going forward. And then, another district-wide accomplishment was additional opportunities for inclusion of all students in the arts. So Reach Out Music at the High School is a beautiful class that some of you might be aware of, and then also Adaptive Music at the Hosmer. So just different ways outside an academic classroom that we are making sure all students are included. Elementary accomplishments, I'll kind of whiz through these. I know, it was hard, believe me. There were three slides, and DeeDee said, Teresa, can you get that to one slide? I'm like, all right, I'll try, but just make the font smaller.
Exactly. Size nine.
Because it takes a lot of this background work, so that we can see the outcomes change. The outcomes don't change in one school year, they change when you have this committed resource through our budget. So, for example, we shifted Title I funds. When I started last year, they were at the high school and the middle school. It's where we spent our federal funds for Title I. We didn't think that that was the best use of them, we wanted it at the elementary level, so we were able to do that. So this year, at the Hosmer and at the Lowell, sorry, at the Lowell, we have Title I tutors in both math and ELA. And Elizabeth and Allison are doing wonderful work in supporting that Title I funding there, so that will make a difference over time as well. Systematic foundations, phonics instructions in grade one and two, that's what we accomplished this year, next year, I'll be up here saying, and K also. We introduced the effective math coaching and collaborating this year. We did math benchmarks and unit assignments and all elementary data meetings, which are coming up at the end of March, actually, which we hadn't had last year. We have Chromebook cards in grades three to five and interactive whiteboards in all grade one classrooms this year, which is very exciting for students. In fact, that visit that I had to this Boston classroom this morning, there were 22 students in it, and it was a fourth grade classroom, and they all had various colors headphones on, and they were doing a program called Imagine Learning, a blended learning program. And it was, the engagement in the classroom was remarkable. And these are students who are ELL students one through three, so that means really learning a language at a rudimentary level. So we're excited to have that technology at our lower levels. Implementation of readers workshops, we have 13 lab teachers or lab classrooms, which means they're wonderful to allow other teachers to come in and see what's happening. They're getting coaching from our consultants from TLA. There's actually 20 teachers involved, because some are co-teachers, right? So you'll have a special educator and a gen ed teacher in that classroom. But 13 of the elementary classrooms across all three elementary schools have these lab classrooms, which we're continuing next year with professional development support as well. The implementation, of course, of FLESS in K and one both, and next year, two. Adopt and purchases is very exciting. Lucy Cawkins Research-Based Units of Study for teachers to start next year, K to five. So they're summer present, will be this package, wonderful resource. And also, a lot of teachers are dedicating their time at the end of this school year, provided we don't have any more snow days. And they're actually going to work in a two-to-three-day institute with these units of study ahead of time, so that, one, they can feel a little bit better coming back in the fall, not so overwhelmed, but, two, just to get a head start on using that. And you'll see in another slide, I'm connecting this, because we have some quotes from teachers who took professional development, and in it, their request was, please, please, we want more units of study to be able to do that. So it's nice to be able to have that in the budget from their requests as well. We have 18 math teacher leaders this year, which we didn't have before, that form the district elementary math task force and work with Elizabeth Kaplan closely and with our math coach as well. And we've introduced TenMarkz, as I mentioned, grades three to five this year, K to nine next year. And we've expanded our percussion program, grade five and six through eight. So we've, as Meg tells me, we are getting back to, I guess, where the district was a few years ago before, in terms of offerings for students at the elementary level.
Okay.
Second, oh, yes, please.
The teacher leaders, 18 math teacher leaders, can you say a little bit more about what they do as a teacher leader?
Yeah, in fact, I'm going to let, I'm going to let Elizabeth, not later, right now, that would be great.
Absolutely. So there's one math teacher leader at every grade level in every school, and it is a new thing for them to be teacher leaders. And so we've done a lot of work, I've actually realized, we've done a lot of work on how they can collaborate with their colleagues as math leaders. But the big thing that they've done is we had a summer institute where we really did some visioning on where do we, where do we want to be in the future with our math program, and where were we, and what do we need to do in between? And what came out of it is that we lacked common assessments, we didn't collect math data, our curriculum wasn't fully aligned to the standards, and then that was our work for this year. So we've, with the math coach, who's a wonderful, wonderful staff member, and myself and the leaders, we've written grade-level scope and sequences, so basically curriculum maps that use math and focus but really tightly aligned to the standards. There were some disparities. So those are going into Atlas, that are going to Atlas, and they are writing unit assessments. So they wrote, our math coach wrote benchmark assessments, which we gave at the beginning of the year, we'll give at the end of the year, and now we have actual district common math unit assessments that they are collaborating on. So they're, they're working really hard. We are sending them to a little bit of outside professional development. We do rely on them to make sure that their colleagues feel comfortable with everything that's going on, and it's been successful.
Do they, they do observations or kind of co-teaching or will?
No, our math coach does that. That's really her role. They, what they do is grade-level team meetings, common planning time, times where principals can't, can't be there. They will run data meetings, they will go over things with people, they will support them. It's really nice, because we have a nice system in that we're not writing these assessments, Elif Teria, the math coach, and I, and sending them to everybody. We're having a teacher leader help do it, so when we send everything out, there's much less problems. It's a, it's a nice kind of system.
Great, thank you.
Two questions. What is, when is, when is, are these teacher leaders going to the middle school, and kind of, when is that going to move up?
I'm not, I'm not sure. This year, I've been working with Dan Wolf, who's our six to 12 coordinator, more closely than we have in the past, because now that we are aligned, so we can do that vertical alignment more. I, I'm not, Teresa, can you answer about the middle school? I'm not sure if they have that on the...
So we've been focused this year on elementary. Next year, our focus is shifting, because we're going to have completed the standards-based report card, we're going to have completed the decision on social-emotional learning, so we're going to shift to the middle school. Now, what the needs are at the middle school are very different, because they have teams.
They're content-based.
You know, it's one school, and they have teams, versus the elementary's three schools, individual teachers, so it requires a lot more. So I'm not sure that structure will be necessary, but we'll know better next year when we look at it.
Dig into it a little bit.
Yeah.
So one, one other thing, if you remember from last Monday, in the items that weren't currently funded for this year that were requested, we had a literacy coach and a team coach for the middle school. So we left those up there to kind of message the fact that we think moving forward, that that's going to be a great model for middle schools. So I think that that's another way that we're going to support our teachers, hopefully.
But you've worked, I know you said you've worked on the kind of grade five to grades six articulation.
This year, we're working more, we've worked in the past on it, but I don't feel that we were that effective, because we had problems, like, for example, our fifth-grade math and focus curriculum was actually teaching the sixth-grade standards. So there was a little bit of repetition when kids got to sixth grade. This year, we're really digging in and doing the work more closely, because we are newly aligned to the standards. So Dan and I have talked, we're going to get the math teacher leaders together, the fifth-grade ones, with the sixth-grade teachers, very soon, so that's, that's never happened before. So it's getting better that way.
I have one more question. In terms of the benchmarks that the teacher leaders wrote, so those, every, every teacher uses now those new benchmarks.
And we also collect the data at a district level for every school, every teacher. And Allison and I are running all elementary grade-level data meetings next week to look at all the literacy data and everything. So yes, everybody's implementing them. We, for the math, it's standards-based, it's not curriculum-based, so it is like MCAS, and it is, in students, we have item analysis, so we're using the item analysis. So we've come a long way with math assessment this year.
I'll be interested to see growth, because since you did the September to the June, looking at what that, because that's...
I will present, I will, will present that.
In September, or October, September, first, definitely.
Exactly.
Thanks for your work.
It'll be great to start next year with the previous year's end-of-year benchmark, which we never had.
And with I-Ready.
Yeah, yeah.
That will mean, yeah, because then we'll have more monitoring, not just...
Yeah.
Yeah. So at the secondary level, very excited to be in a district where we have full deployment of one-on-one Chromebooks, grades six through 12, completed that this year. New art courses, adding drawing one and painting one at the high school. New jazz band in middle school choral accompaniment, because those were on our list to ask for last year, makes a big difference, for the student experience in a chorus class. Development of a new U.S. history curriculum scope and sequence, embedding more project-based learning into that. Develop, an implementation of thematic units in PBL in six through 11. At the end of the last school year, we had a three-day Buck Institute training for project-based learning. So this school year, teachers in either small groups or departments are embedding a project or two, depending upon the department, into, it's just much more authentic experience. We want to get much more into that next year. The high school, they had a successful pilot of a semester called, course called Introduction to Computer Programming, Python. Dr. Goldston brought in emotional learning teams, and one of them at the high school was SAT versus ACT, and they did an alignment and analysis of the exams within the curriculum. And teachers across different disciplines of high school met to analyze an SAT, what's required for an SAT, what's required for an ACT, and what the needs were in the curriculum based on that. We expanded Project Lead the Way at the high school, and the path now includes three courses and a capstone course. We implemented Project Lead the Way at the middle school via enrichment courses, which are highly engaging for students. And we had three consecutive trips abroad, not in one year, but to provide authentic learning opportunities for students. So Costa Rica twice, Italy, and then Spain next year, and our foreign language department has been supporting that. So budget priorities, K to 12, as I mentioned, Atlas Curriculum Mapping Tool, the cost, the rationale, I think we've gone over. And the funding source, now, one thing to pay particular attention to in this column of funding sources, I've written whether it's district curriculum-level budget, it's a federal grant that we're using for it, or if it's a priority in our budget this year. So I tried to delineate in between some of these. The second one, the I-Ready Assessment and Intervention, it's a district curriculum recommended budget priority, which you'll see the list that Mary, I think, showed us last week, above the line, the ones, that was one of them. And at the elementary level, the budget priorities, classroom libraries, big, big cost there that you see, but that's every classroom in the elementary schools. Appropriate levels of engaging text to support the implementation of our readers workshop, and that's coming from the regular day budget, recommended budget, priority one addition. The literacy coach, we have one, and one between three schools is a challenge, but nice to have. Two is better. As teachers will say, it's nonevalutive, and it's entirely being coached, just like a sports team would be coached. It's wonderful. So we're asking for a literacy coach, and that's a level service budget item, because there's an existing unfilled position, so that's not something that's going, we're going to add to next year's budget, but we just want to put it out there, because it is a priority. So we're refunding those. Foundations in kindergarten, to continue that, and that's from the level service budget. Ongoing professional development and in-class literacy coaching, and that's the Teaching and Learning Alliance, TLA, we use that acronym, that's continuing with them this year. So Allison and I meet closely with the folks from TLA and say, we look at what we've done this year, and then what are the needs going forth next year. Tomorrow, if there's no snow, we have a cadre of 17, how many people do we have?
Eighteen.
Eighteen teachers and a couple of district folks going to a school in Framingham to do guided tours of classrooms that TLA is working with, and taking notes and meeting with the teachers, really rich experience, and that's part of that. Down to a math coach, expanding coaching from one coach to two coaches. Elementary health exploratory process. So Joe Lappman and myself met with our elementary health teachers and had a good meeting at a department meeting last month, and they're going to investigate, do a study next year on what's needed at the elementary level. They're going to study different districts to see, we already have started some of it, you know, do we do grades three to five, do we do K to five, you know, what do we do? So we're just looking at elementary health, and that's part of our bigger goal on social-emotional learning. It's not just a social-emotional learning program that a core teacher does, it's across the district. So that's just one example, something we want to look at. And then finally, world languages, some curriculum development for new curriculum for FLESS. At the secondary level, some budget priorities include, summer Project Lead the Way training, that's a continuous thing, as you're all aware. That's a budget two priority addition from the recommended budget. TenMarkz instructional software for the middle school, and up to ninth grade, I believe Dan was going to try that one. And six to 12 professional development on standards courses, implementation of the new U.S. History II course, and that's coming from a couple, it's a budget two and regular day, so I guess it's coming out of both budgets, is what I understand from that. And finally, for digital learning, ninth grade Chromebooks, that's a four-year refresh cycle, so that's a big number, $50,000, but computers, as you know, have to be replaced. So that's part of their refresh cycle. And finally, the, oh, go right ahead.
Just, I just want to mention that when you look at, at the fact that, as Teresa pointed out, that either these things were already in the operating budget, or that they were priorities, et cetera, one of the things that we emphasize this year is, you know, reexamine what you're already doing within the level services budget. And if you want to move things around, because you think there's a better way to do that, the principal's engaged in that work as well as the district leaders. And I think next year, the excitement will be that, you know, when we have an improvement Um, and I think next year, the excitement will be that, you know, when we have a, an improvement strategy that's been developed, um, we'll align all of these directly to the objectives. I mean, they already, they already are to our short-term objectives, but I think next year you'll see a greater line as to why it is that these are our priorities. Um, so I, I'm very excited about how everything's starting to really come together, and that we are really looking at all of our funding to move the district forward, not just the, the extra that we're, we have in terms of the, the delta between the four point two and the five, so. Sorry, I didn't mean that.
Yeah, that's great. Um, and a little bit on professional development. Um, so these data are showing you, um, some feedback at the secondary level from teachers who, um, participated in our January, um, full day professional development. And on this chart, basically what you see is, number one is, um, did the presenter deliver organized, engaging presentation? And when ninety-two percent of teachers, um, say, on a scale of one to five, from least true to most true, I think that's a, is a really good percentage that they felt it was quality and it was what they asked for. But more importantly is the second, um, the second chart there, the information learned in the session was useful to me in better understanding or in working with my students. So eighty-four percent were in the four or five most true categories. Um, so it's, it's pretty good feedback, cause, you know, it's hard to, we have, uh, how many people total in the district, Mary? What would you say?
Just under six hundred.
Yeah, a lot. And so it's, it's a challenge to meet the needs of all, but the better we can do that, the better outcomes for students. So I was feeling good about that. Some quantitative feedback from professional development at the elementary levels. Um, so at the very bottom, it's CPR training, TLA that we've told you about for literacy, and the units of study for literacy, and then FLESS, those were the four categories. Um, the blue line is indicating information learned in the session will be useful to me in better understanding or in working with my students. And as you can see, they're all above four, some close to five, so that's a great outcome. Um, the presenter in the session delivered an organized, engaging presentation, again, above the four, close to the five. And finally, overall, I recommend this session to my colleague, all above the four, um, closer to the five. So that's good feedback from teachers, appreciating the professional development that they're doing. Some qualitative, um, notes on this. Um, I'm not gonna read them, these are three examples from the literacy work that was done, um, this year. But I, what I think is important is a couple of lines in the first square I've highlighted in my notes, very, very applicable to what I do in the classroom, plus all of the other stuff. Use it in my daily instruction. These are the kinds of things that we wanna see, not like, nice idea, I don't think you can ever implement it. Um, and the second one down there, um, I appreciate it being able to look at data to drive our instructions. When you have teachers saying that, it's like, it's juice to us when you hear teachers saying that, that's fantastic. Um, and then they're also saying, I look forward to learning more about units of study. And the units of study is what I showed you in a prior slide that we're purchasing for all K to five teachers. Finally, in the bottom right-hand corner, um, the presenter was very clear on how to implement them, and I will need significantly more leveled readers. So when they write that, and that number I just showed you, is fifty-five thousand dollars, which is a lot of books for a lot of classrooms, we're supporting teachers in, in, in what they're requesting. And then in mathematics and science, these are just a couple more, um, examples. On the top one, uh, bring your eyes to the section that says, Integrating Science into Literacy Blocks. And these are teachers saying they want to know how to do this, and they appreciate what they've gotten so far. Uh, in math, down there, it says another, integration. These are their words, which I love to read. Integration into the math workshop, and how I can do it outside the math block, that they are learning this. This is, this is excellent. And finally, in the bottom right corner, the part I like the most is, um, collaborate and work with other special educators around math. So, uh, overall, the, the feedback is, is very positive. This, coming forward this year, um, our budget goal, again, tied to the strategic objectives that were outlined in December. The budget goal is to support educators' instructional practice to meet the needs of all of our students in expanding and ensuring cohesive professional development. So for next year, our PD will be surfacing around new social emotional learning program. Obviously, we need to support teachers in that. The elementary standards-based report card implementation, developing rubrics, curriculum, unit assignments, all of that, that will be aligned. So when your ta, when your child takes an end of, uh, unit assessment, each question on it will be aligned to the report card, to a standard on there. It's not nebulous. So it's very structuring in that way. Uh, it takes a lot of work though for us and teachers to, to plan that. Um, understanding by design, that's part of our Atlas work that we're doing. What do we want students to know at the end, and how do we get them there? Um, and how do we make sure that they can transfer that skill? How do they have autonomy in deciding how they wanna learn that? All of that stuff. Um, it's a concentration K to twelve next year. For literacy, again, TLA year two implementation next year, foundations year three to kindergarten. Uh, differentiated instruction across K twelve. Expansion of interdisciplinary project-based learning and performance-based assessments. Curriculum development continues, that's, that's important. Uh, vertically aligning, like we were just discussing, between fifth and sixth grade, and certainly eighth and ninth grade. Uh, mathematics is one example. Um, elementary health curriculum study and planning that I mentioned. Um, using Chromebooks in the classroom for more personalized learning. Um, we, we got great, we have great, um, technology. Uh, we've been supported by the town, um, and by the school board, or the school committee to be able to procure so much technology, but we need ongoing professional development to engage our students and our teachers. And finally, training in Tenmark's grades six to nine. Here, um, outlines the, uh, budget summary and numbers, salaries, uh, this is, this is Mary's territory.
And I just wanted to point out, and we pointed this out earlier too, that, uh, it's a little bit deceiving. Um, we didn't cut one, one point three million dollars out of Teresa's budget. We reallocated curriculum coordinators to building level, and I think we've stated that a couple of times. When all was said and done, it was equivalent, uh, to, I think, nine point four FTEs that got redistributed out of the district curriculum back to the regular day building budgets based on their role. So, for example, um, Elizabeth, who is now, her salary's attributed to the three elementary schools, split a third, a third, a third, Allison's, but between three elementary schools and the middle school, so. Which are sort of examples of, of why that, that happened. Most of what she was talking about in terms of the funding was, um, was, um, attributed to regular day, so you don't see it necessarily in this summary. Um, and then there was, you can see there's some reallocation that happened between, say, other expenditures and supplies and materials. So overall, this, this budget is relatively stable, other than those reallocations. And a lot of what you saw is the recommendations are coming from the regular day budgets.
Um, and before we move on to student service, sort of in summary, I think all of us have a, a keen awareness um, of the need for, um, supporting our students' social emotional wellness in schools and outside of schools. So the program from K to five that will start next year is one way of doing it, but we're looking at, 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 as a strategic goal overall. So when I talked about looking at the health curriculum, that's another way. When the high school is looking at changing their schedule and including more advisory, that's another way. When I talk about looking at, um, middle school next year and how, um, their, it's social emotional program is and what their advisory looks like, that's another way. So it's not just one thing, it's many across. I think we can all agree that that, um, is just as important as academic achievement. Any questions before I move it over to my colleague Kathy Demarest to talk about student services? Does anyone in the audience have questions? You should feel free to ask questions.
Um, how are you evaluating the success of especially, um, the foundations, um, implementation?
Um, through, well, through Allison is, um.
Call me in, sorry.
Yeah, I will, I will, I'll let you tell your, your.
So, in, um, grade one, when they first implemented last year, um, they had ongoing professional development, and year one, it's sort of hard. You're, you're really struggling just to learn to implement it within the time allotted because it is a program with many components. Um, but we keep data, um, we have multiple measures that we use. So we have benchmark data, which is their overall reading level when they integrate the skills. But then we also have, uh, QPS, which is a quick phonics screener that we give K to five three times a year. Um, and each section of that breaks out different components of phonics. Um, and so we can see, um, they did it in September, they just did it again in March. Um, and that's part of the data that we'll show the teachers, um, this week, is analyzing and keeping that. So one thing that's different this year is that every school's using the same formatted data grid. Um, so we can compile the information pretty easily from all three buildings, and then, um, reflect it back to teachers. Additionally, foundations itself has a, um, progress monitoring tool, which is every unit test, teachers enter into a data tracker as well, and I have access to that as well. So we can see even just based on, um, weekly unit tests, where are kids falling down and needing, um, retesting. So we've done work with coaching, um, at the second grade level this year, um, and also going back and looking at the fidelity of implementation in first grade. Um, I've been visiting each, um, classroom with the building principals to look at, um, you were trained last year in first grade, how's it going? Is it still being implemented with fidelity, um, and ongoing coaching for that?
Thank you.
Sure.
Well.
Kathy, it's all yours.
All right. So I can use it. Um, so hi, I'm Kathy Demarest, I'm Director of Student Services here in Watertown. Um, just a little bit of, um, context, that's a new title for me this year. Um, when I was hired, I was the Director of, um, Special Education. So there's a little bit more to, um, to the areas that I've overseen this school year. The major functional areas that fall currently under student services are special education. Um, we have coordinators, team chairs, related service providers, so your occupational therapists, your speech-language pathologists, um, physical therapists, um, VCPAs, sorry, Forward Certified Behavior Analysts, um, our teachers and instructional assistants. We also have behavioral health and social emotional support. Um, and under that kind of umbrella, we have guidance counselors, school psychologists, social workers, school adjustment counselors, oh, I put the VCPAs there, okay, and also behavior specialists. Um, our nursing services fall under student services, and also out-of-district tuition and transportation. This is just a slide that shows you in general how many students, um, in each school currently are, um, identified as having special education needs and having IEPs. And some of our accomplishments this year. Um, we're training for principals and guidance counselors regarding 504 plans, civil rights and responsibilities in regards to bullying and harassment. Uh, nurses have successfully implemented SNAP, which is their school nurses' student information system. That was new for them this year, and they've, um, done that successfully. We also implemented our Power School Special Education System for IEPs. Last, up to last school year, we were using a system called Easy IEP. Um, this was a lot of work for our special educators and related services providers. It was not, uh, it was not easy to learn this new system. The, uh, significant benefits are that, um, it speaks to our student information system. So I, we went through the, um, I, I pass to Power School change over last year for all students. Um, and so throughout that whole first year for me, um, and even prior, I pass didn't talk to Easy IEP, and Power School didn't talk to Easy IEP. So we were kind of on our own. Um, sometimes the, if, if a parent moved, um, the address wouldn't be updated. The IEP might get mailed to another address, there'd be delays. Um, but now we have this assist, these systems talk to each other. Even more, more powerful is that now our general education teachers, every teacher, um, that sees a student has access through their Power School portal to be able to, to view the documents for those students, um, electronically. So that's a huge win for us. We've provided ongoing job embedded training to all of our instructional assistants, a couple of years tonight, um, with, through the Except Collaborative with Elise Stokes. Um, and that has provided for us kind of a common framework so that every instructional assistant across the district has the same training and ideas about, um, what the role is. How do we feed our support? How do we promote independence for our children? Um, because that's our goal. Um, we also had job embedded training and coaching provided to our new and veteran co-teaching pairs at Watertown High School, a little bit, um, with the middle school as well, with Kathy Porcaro. Um, and we're continuing to work with her. She's going to be putting together a train-the-trainer model to help build our internal capacity to continue, um, with inclusive practices, including co-teaching. Um, teacher-led professional development on co-teaching was offered and will receive during the January training. And our first secondary transition fair for students fourteen through twenty-two and their parents and guardians is planned for April two thousand eighteen. We had.
Can I ask, what's a transition fair?
Oh, good question. Um, so a transition fair, so students with disabilities, um, are eligible until, for services up until they either earn their diploma or turn twenty-two. Um, and then very often, they may need some additional services and supports as they're making that transition into their adulthood, whether that means college or whether into the world at work. Um, and so that's an important period of time for school and for families and for students to start to learn not to be so reliant on all the supports that they have in the school setting, and to learn what it's going to be like, um, in adulthood, um, because those entitlements, uh, go away, um, essentially. Uh, but there are other things under Section 504 that they may have entitlements to. So a transition fair is where, um, parents and students learn about all of the different, um, agencies that are available to help students with that transition. So for milder disabilities, it might be the Massachusetts Rehabilitation Commission. Um, they can provide often, um, some training, some supports, um, driver's education, um, evaluations to see if, or, uh, you know, if a student has the capacity to earn, you know, to, to driver's license, those kinds of things. Um, Mass Commission for the Blinds for students who are visually impaired. Um, and the Department of Developmental Services for students who have significant intellectual disabilities, um, and/or autism. Um, so they learn those things. Um, so we had our Common Coordinators established in selected pilot classrooms across the elementary schools. So this was an idea, um, to have, instead of our, um, so much our opportunity rooms, which are, are still going to function in some of our elementary schools, but to start to bring, um, that opportunity into the classroom so that students who are having a difficulty with dysregulation, instead of having to exit the classroom and miss all that rich instruction, have an opportunity to, um, to kind of calm themselves within the classroom setting. Um, the Integrated Support Program opened at the Lowell Elementary School, and that was something we talked about in the last budget cycle. Um, it was kind of a missing piece in our continuum of services so that our little ones at the elementary level, if they needed, um, substantial separate services, if they needed services for the majority of their school day, would have to be outplaced. They weren't able to stay within, um, within the Watertown Public Schools. So that was, um, very exciting, um, and I do have to credit Stacy, we'll be squipping, um, but as the, the principal at the Lowell really, um, led, um, a fantastic opening of that program. Wonderful teacher, um, Laura Holman, um, our behavior specialist, Brian Connors, and our guidance counselor, um, counselor, sorry, Hope Botaro, and Veronica Knight were key in that, as well as, um, Kelly, our school psychologist. Um, so just kudos to the Lowell for that being so successful. Um, and we actually have a student who had been outplaced last year with no options. It is, I'm very excited to be looking to see if they can come back, um, for the start of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year to that program. Um, and then support for students' mental health needs has been very much in the news and in our minds. As, um, we've had, um, some very terrible events, um, take place, and we, um, took a look at what, 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 where we're at. Um, and so the American School Counselors Association recommends, um, no more than two hundred fifty students for every one mental health counselor, so guidance counselors, school adjustment counselors, social worker, are those that were counted in that category, did not count psychologists. Um, so, and the state's average in Massachusetts is one such counselor to every four hundred ninety-three students. These are our numbers. So at the high school, we have one, um, counselor for every hundred-two students. What, middle school, one for every one thirty-one, Hasbro, one for every one forty-seven, um, Lowell, one for one sixty-seven, kind of one for one fifty-three. So that is, um, tremendous, um, support that we have in that.
Kathy, can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
I thought I remember one of the items that was being rearranged or reallocated is some counseling. How does that affect these numbers? Because that's in, was an elementary counselor, right?
It, it is, yeah. It has a, it has a minor impact. Um, I don't have like the math on that slide, but we'll talk about it when we get to the, to, to that kind of, um, looking at that. It's a good question.
I mean, just, just to refresh also, is that, and I know you're gonna talk about this, but, um, the community outreach social worker is a district-level position, but that's, that's also somebody who will then be providing support for, for students at the school. And the addition of the assistant principal, although they don't count in that ratio, um, we will have an additional adult within the building that will be supporting students, um, you know, who are, might be struggling. So it's, although they, they might not fall in there, they are there. Um, just wanna make sure we remember that one.
Absolutely. And when we get to that slide, um, I think that one of the things that we've seen in CCE has identified is that, um, a lot of, um, tasks were given to guidance counselors that the ASCA, sorry, ASCA, um, kind of crowns on it, that it's, so it's less kid time, it's more kind of administrative work. Um, and that's something that would then be, be allocated to the assistant principal position that was recommended for that.
Thanks, Karen.
Can you say again which positions are considered in that ratio?
Yes, that is your guidance counselors, school adjustment counselors, and social workers.
Thanks.
Karen, is it good to see you?
Sure. Um, so for the Early Steps Program, um, we are hoping, the weather has not been cooperating too much for, for March, um, for us to be. for, for March, for us to be having our turning three, but hopefully finding the time either in April or May to have an information night for our parents to be able to figure out about developmental processes in regards to their children turning three and when they're ready for the integrated preschool program, either through an evaluation for an IEP or as a community child to be part of our, our program. So we're hoping to have one in, during the daytime and then also at night so that this way we can help meet the needs of all of the parents. We modeled after the elementary schools to have a general education team process, also known as GET. And what that does is allow us to look at some of our community children who are enrolled in our preschool currently and see if there is a suspected disability that would require an evaluation. Sometimes students come in as a community child or typical child at the time, but once they're in, we do, based on our highly qualified staff, notice that there are some areas that may spark some red flags. So we're able to implement some, which ties into the tiered system of supports, some of our support systems for general ed students and be able to see if they're responding to the interventions or if there is something that we feel is a suspected disability that would require testing. So it has been a very successful model. We've had a couple of students that have really responded well to the interventions that have been provided, so therefore not requiring at this particular time the need for an evaluation to, for special education services. So we keep monitoring even after the strategies are being implemented, just to make sure that none of the students just hit it that first couple of times, that we're looking at the benchmark assessment, that they are continuously making strides in developing along the continuum that we're looking for. And the last thing echoes what Kathy was saying earlier is that we have been providing some job embedded coaching for our educational assistants and also our teachers through the Except Collaborative. So there are two times during the month, on the Monday afternoon times, when students are dismissed and we don't have our afternoon sessions, where the IAs and the teachers will work together at a professional development time, or it'll just be the, the IAs themselves having time with Elise to be able to work on different topics. Elise and I do collaborate for what we feel would be good topics to be working on. Some of them is the fading of supports for students that have a one-to-one or that have a shared IA, what that looks like, what are some ways to track and to record data for behavior. We work a lot on making sure that we're collecting that accurate information. And then also, how can we as a team, when we're looking at the teachers and the IAs together, what is the best strategies for helping and supporting our classrooms? What does that look like and how can we continue to improve our practice? We have a lot of longevity in our staff at the preschool, which is something to be said for staff wanting to stay. And so sometimes those refreshers are really good to have, just to refresh our bag of tricks on ways that we can continue to support our students.
I did want to point out as well that the preschool IAs, Elise Stokes actually piloted the module that she's working on this year with the rest of the staff with her preschool IAs in the spring, was very well received. And this year, it's more looking at the whole, the partnership. And so we're considering that for, for next year. What do the teachers need to know as well when working with an instructional assistant as a support person in the classroom? Thank you. So goals for fiscal year nineteen, I think not terribly different from what we've had in the past in supporting, you know, the district goals. So continuation of professional development is a big thing and job embedded coaching as well for our general education teachers, our special education teachers, our administrators and instructional assistants in improving inclusive practices for all students. And we'll talk in further slides about why is inclusion so important. Increasing parent outreach via the CPAC, informal coffees, the Student Services Administration, and district-led parent information and training sessions will continue to be a goal. CPAC has had a bit of a struggle, so we're hoping to have some parents that will step up and, and help out. We had a parent that moved over the summer, and we have our current chairperson is going to be stepping down. It is a lot of, a lot of work, and she is kind of flying solo. So anyone that you know that would help, and it is a time commitment, it's important to be able to meet with me at least once a month to kind of help, help stay in touch. And then continued focus on closing our achievement gaps and improving outcomes for students with disabilities. So why is inclusion important? It's mandated, it's law, okay, I'd like to use that, but that's only one little part of why it's important. The definition is assuring that students with disabilities are educated with students who are not disabled to the maximum extent appropriate. At our placement definitions when we're talking, full inclusion, people sometimes misinterpret that to mean that you cannot step foot outside of the classroom, that's not accurate. You can have some pullout and still be included, considered fully included. So it's just eighty percent of more of your day is spent in the regular classroom. Partial inclusion, they're forty-one to seventy-nine percent of their day in the regular classroom and substantially separate, sixty percent or more of the school day is segregated. Inclusion benefits all students, not just students with disabilities. And the practices for beneficial and inclusive settings are beneficial for all students. Disability is a form of human diversity, and we don't segregate based on, you know, diversity. We need to learn to live with diverse humans. And we're going to talk about Dr. Thomas Hare's research from Massachusetts. And the district data, when we look at Dr. Hare's research, we're going to see our district data kind of follows that same trend. So this slide we showed last year, I don't know that I spent a lot, enough time on it. And I also saw that some formatting issues, we lost the key. So just so you know, I'm going to tell you, the blue is students that are not low-income and the green is students that are low-income, as you're looking at those bars. But what Dr. Tom did, Dr. Tom Hare did over Massachusetts, he took all data for students with disabilities. And he looked at not our students that are significantly disabled, so not our students with significant cognitive disabilities, not our students with severe autism, not, not that group. He's looking at students with mild, high-incidence disabilities. So these are specific learning disabilities, communication disabilities, and health generally your ADHD students. So students who you're going to expect will be earning diplomas, going on to, you know, to work and to college and, and to independence. And he separated it out for, for all kinds of factors so that they're really similar students and just looked at what the difference was in their MCAS scores by placement. So on the left, you have students who are fully included. In the middle, you have partial inclusion. And towards the right, you have students that are, that were substantially separate, that were, that were learning in segregated settings. So you can see that there is an impact, that, that your placement does matter.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there, I'm going to make an assumption and you tell me if I'm wrong, that if, if you have a child that's included eighty to a hundred percent of the day versus a child that is included zero to forty percent of the day, there's probably some, some difference in terms of the disability or the needs that they require that could have an impact on their MCAS score too.
So not necessarily. I think that when you start to look at how different districts place students and Dr. Tom's, sorry, Dr. Hare's report goes through that at length, then you start to see that, that that's not actually what the answer is. And it does have to do with poverty. It's a very interesting report and I will definitely share it with you so you can read that through. You were going to say something, DeeDee?
No, 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 I was just going to echo exactly that. It, it's almost, I've seen also data that looks at, you know, similar students, you know, same type of profile, who, those which are in substantially separate classrooms versus those which are fully included, same, you know, same disability, whatever it might be, and they just achieve that much more in the inclusive, inclusive setting.
It's about placement practices of the district.
Yeah, so it's not necessarily disability-related, it's, it's our own practices.
Yeah, and then it's the first go-to that people assume when they're seeing this, this data. And that's why this slide, I always point out, this is our very mildly disabled students. These are, you know, it's specific learning and communication health. These are disabilities where we actually expect they won't always need to have an IEP.
This is statewide though, this is not-
This is not Watertown, this is the whole state. This was a huge study that was commissioned by the state of Massachusetts. Yes. So we're going to now look at Watertown.
Okay, thank you.
So again, this, this goes two thousand twelve through two thousand sixteen, and it's Watertown. It's all rates, kind of all put together. And your yellow line there for this, so this is advanced proficiency on the MCAS test. Your yellow line is students without disabilities. Your blue line is students with disabilities who are fully included. Your red line is students with disabilities who are partially included. And your red line is, I'm sorry, teal, teal line is students who are in substantially separate settings. What I want to point out about this as well, because people start to think about our students that we know will maybe always need support, who maybe aren't going to be earning a diploma, those students aren't taking the MCAS test, they're doing an MCAS vault. That, that is not reflected in this graph, so that's not who these students are.
So what you're saying is there's a marked increase in students in full inclusion?
Yeah, that graph is going in the right direction. You know, there's, that, that gap was being closed in two thousand sixteen for sure, for that group. But the difference between fully included and partially included is, is huge. So again, that had to stop in two thousand sixteen, we couldn't extend that graph because we had CARG and we had MCAS two point oh, and so we took, took a look at what happened. Grade ten, because it was the same test, so this is a trend line. So this is math by placement, so again, your yellow line is your students without disabilities. Your blue line is students fully included. That, that blue one at the bottom is your partially included students. Your substantially separate students are not represented because the number was too low. There wasn't enough students to be, to be represented in the state data.
Although sample size, not the number.
Sample size, yes, thank you. And then English, I liked two thousand sixteen, where we had no achievement gap there with our students who are fully included. And you kind of see the same trend, and again, the substantially separate, the sample size, the N was too low.
I think in general it's kind of important for us to remember, just from a math teacher talking right now, that the sample size is in general really small because Watertown's a small district, which is why it's jumping.
Right.
And especially if the students who have disabilities, like this is not a normal way to see trends. We have such a small sample size, there could be large variation because of cohort to cohort, because of the students that are there, so. But in Thomas Hare's work, doesn't he, he has a large sample?
Yeah, exactly. Right, we're just, I like how you've shown just-
Huge sample, yes.
So this was how things came out last year with our next iteration math and pass performance. So your, what do we call that, an orange square, Mary, did we go with orange square? Students without disabilities. Your blue dot is students with disabilities who are fully included. And then that X down there is the students who are partially included. And this is grades three through eight, ELA. Same thing. So that's, that's something we want to tackle for sure going into our upcoming school year. So challenges, again, we have persistent achievement gaps when we're comparing students without, with disabilities to students without. Providing the appropriate professional development and supports for general and special education teachers who are new or nervous about inclusive practices has been a challenge because we really run the gamut. We have folks who are full-on and gung-ho and enthusiastic about inclusion and co-teaching and some that, you know, just want to, want to learn more. So just trying to get the right supports to the, at the right time for the right folks. And then identification of and provision of prompt intervention for students at risk for chronic apathy and the school avoidance was something that came to my attention this year. We're going to take a look at that. So this is Watertown attendance rates as compared to the state. So we're a little bit behind the state for overall attendance. Average number of days absent is higher than the state. Absent ten or more days, that's higher than the state. And chronically absent, also higher than the state. Unexcused absence is more than nine, but higher than the state as well. So those are things that we think that we can do better. What's that?
Community outreach social.
Community, yes, yes, we're building, it's coming.
I know, I know.
Is this for us, are those numbers for all students or are those just for the students that are, that you've been under your dress to-
Yeah, excellent question. This is overall, this is the entire district. And the next slide will be kind of the folks that I tend to zero in on some more. So this is chronically absent students with disabilities. So this is percentage of students with disabilities with ten or more days absent, which is considered chronically absent. And I do like the trend line, so we're orange, right, we are, we're going down. And, but it's still alarming to me when I look at almost one-fifth of our students are, are absent more than ten or more days. And that can really compound in terms of how their outcomes are going to be. Instructional assistance support has been something we've been talking about since even before I came on board. We had two separate reports that were handed to me when I crossed the threshold in July of two thousand sixteen. One was the EDCO report and one was the RSM report, both of which said we needed to really take a close look at our, how we're using instructional assistance and whether it was really the best use. And so we've been paying a lot of attention, doing PD and looking at this. We continue to have more instructional assistants than, than teaching staff under special education. Per regulations, the work of instructional assistant has to be directly overseen by a licensed professional. That happens very naturally when we are talking about our program. So say our Connections Program or our LB Program, where you have, the teacher is in that classroom most of the day with the students and with a group of instructional assistants. So that that oversight's very natural and you see that and we don't have any difficulty with that. It's more challenging to provide that appropriate oversight when, for instructional assistants in inclusive settings. These are some staffing trends in Watertown. Teachers and paraprofessionals per one hundred students with disabilities. So on the left, we are looking at paraprofessionals. We call the, the group instructional assistance here in Watertown, the state's same paraprofessionals. And so the dark red line is, I'm sorry, left is Watertown, right is state. So the dark line is your teachers, so we're at currently eight point seven teachers per students with dis- a hundred students with disabilities and twenty point seven instructional assistants. If you look at the state, there are five teachers per one hundred students with disabilities and ten point nine paraprofessionals.
So why, well, two things. One, I, this, this is two thousand seventeen, that's data from the fall?
This data, I believe, was from the spring.
From the spring?
Mm-hmm. I don't, it has-
It'd be like spring or festival. I think it's even, price of issues, so probably spring.
But I, you know, in the past year, I thought actually the number of instructional assistants has gone down.
It has, it has reduced, but not, not significantly. I, I think that the, if we were to do the math, and I can do that, that math for you, just not in my head this second, I think that you're going to find that we're maybe at like eighteen per one hundred students with disabilities.
From the twenty point seven?
Approximately, yes, because it was about ten percent of a reduction, so I think that's about where we're at. Yep.
And so I guess, just a general question of why, why we would be so much higher than the state?
Right, and I, I don't have a, like a single answer to the why. I think that we have been examining that, that very question, and I think it's multifaceted. We are working with the building principals to examine that. We have an instructional assistance summit, we're going to have conversations and look at what the research has to say about use of instructional assistance and really kind of getting at, you know, why that is, you know, what, what's happening in Watertown and-
I mean, is our, our distribution, maybe it was back earlier, our, our distribution of students with disabilities, does it look significantly different than the state in terms of the nature of it, does it?
Not, not, not significantly, like compared to this. So we are a little bit on the high end for percentage. We're at twenty percent students with disabilities, where the state is seventeen percent.
Right.
But that doesn't account for kind of the picture that we're looking at.
So even, even within that twenty percent, I guess the question too is, the nature of the, the students, is it, you know, more, more students that are separate, that are substantially separate than is typical at the state level, I mean, those kinds of measures? So I mean-
No, and I think, and again, I can share research with you that talks about, when we start to try and say, well, it's the nature of the student, when you really kind of dig down at things, usually it's more about the adults. So it's really about what adults believe. Yep, DeeDee, please.
So, so I think that one thing that, that we haven't really gone over, and I, I think that there's a place to talk about, actually Karen Deehy mentioned a little about the GET process and, you know, interventions, et cetera. And I think that, that when you hear inclusion and you hear inclusive practices, oftentimes people associate, well, you're going to move a student into a classroom and you're going to include them with, with instructional assistance. And that, that's not what inclusion means. Inclusion means, it could run the gamut. You could include somebody and they need accommodations and they come- You could include somebody and they need accommodations, and the accommodations should be delivered by the teacher. Or maybe they do need some additional support with a co-teacher or an instructional assistant. I think that, my personal feeling, just based on the time that I've had here, is that when we started to include more people in classrooms, we included more IAs as well. But that's not necessarily what inclusion means. And I think that when we, one of the goals, the priorities and a goal is exploring the multi-tiered systems of support. We don't necessarily have a fully developed RTI process here. And I think that when we do that, we'll be able to work with everybody about, you know, how do we intervene on students' behalf? And it's not always with an additional person, it might be interventions or accommodations. So I think it's part of it, if I had to.
So I personally, I think the IAs are extremely important. I understand that the scrap shows that there's too many, but on a day-to-day basis, and how I think that they should be with the children, they are the backbone in the classrooms. These kids with severe special needs and limited special needs. They're more than transporting the kids from one classroom to the other. When the kids are having meltdowns, when they can't pay attention, when they're disrupting the class, the IAs can help that so the teacher can continue to teach the class without pulling away. I mean, I think they're extremely, extremely important. I know that the adults maybe think more, but. So I'm personally for keeping more IAs.
So there will always be need for instructional assistance within special education. There's absolutely no doubt about that. And I echo what you're saying, is that they're absolutely the backbone of a special education program, and particularly when we have classrooms with students with severe special needs. So that's, that's not going away, that's not changing. And in fact, when we have talked about, you know, when we had our 10% reduction, you know, last year when we looked at that, that's not where we looked at. We looked at classrooms, you know, and even this year, we're looking at classrooms where there is an instructional assistance assigned and there isn't a student with special needs in that classroom.
So maybe just redirecting those IAs into a classroom that doesn't have that, or a school, yeah.
Correct, yes, 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 exactly. Yeah, none of this is to say that the work of instructional assistance is not important.
Or that it's not needed.
There will never go away. It's extremely important, and we're investing very heavily in appropriate professional development for the teachers that work with instructional assistance as well as instructional assistance. That's vital.
Kathy, I have a good question, just following up on that, which is, you know, you're talking about going towards more co-teaching and talking about how there's some adults who maybe are more resistant to that, but then you have this group of adults who are IAs, who are already obviously co-teaching in many ways, just by being in classrooms. Is the district looking at maybe having a pathway for some of those IAs to go back to school or have some training so that they can actually gain a license and perhaps become full co-teachers?
So we have hired so many IAs already, so that those pathways already exist, so I think.
But if they wanted to become like a full special educated, a licensed teacher, are there, is there a pathway that the district is perhaps partnering with the university or something along those lines to maybe?
I don't know that we have a particular partnership with universities, but we do have many instances where IAs, our IAs, have gone to get their licensure and we have then hired them. Many.
And we have also many IAs that actually have teaching licenses. Right. So, well, moving towards the full co-teaching model though, is that opportunity going to be given if we're going?
We strongly encourage every one of our instructional assistants to go into special education. I am constantly hiring. It's one of those fields where you will always have a job if you're haunted, so I, we absolutely encourage that.
Kathy, I have a quick question about these, I mean, like, the pitch and the difference between paraprofessionals and teachers for Watertown is really dramatic. But I also, I mean, but all of the numbers in Watertown are generally higher than state averages. Is that kind of similar to, like, as testament to the kind of staff that we keep on hand in terms of like ratios and how many, kind of like in class size compared to, like, almost kind of like our good counseling ratios? I'm just curious, because the numbers are just generically much higher anyways.
Right, so I think that, like, it's hard to just say proportionately, like, I know that we value small class sizes for general education. And so I'm trying to recalibrate my thinking about what's an appropriate caseload for a special educator. Just so you have an understanding, you know, what most colleges are telling their graduates that have gone to special education, expect the caseload of about 20 if you're working in inclusion. And for substantially separate, usually it's eight to 12, those are your caseloads. Where our caseloads are at the elementary level, just the ratios, it doesn't mean it's the exact caseload, but one to seven for elementary, and then for our high school and middle school, one to 10, one to 11 students.
So that's why this, that's why this chart looks like that.
For the teachers, yes.
It's why we have more teachers.
Why we have more teachers, it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a very healthy caseload, those are very low caseloads.
The pitches, that's not their.
No, no, not the pitch, I'm saying.
The numbers are higher.
The numbers are bigger because the caseloads are different than what.
Yeah, we have lower caseloads, which, you know, it's an inverse relationship.
Got it.
You have fewer students, meaning more staff.
I get it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I just come back to, I mean, absolutely, we need to provide the best education we can and best services possible. But, I mean, these are really high numbers. And, you know, but, you know, we, this district has had this issue for years. I mean, decades practically, I mean, really, it goes back. I mean, Tom and I were on a task force probably 15 years ago to look at this issue. And so, I mean, I think it's, we have very high special education costs. And I get that, and I think we have great services. But I think we just need to, you know, try to make sure we look at this and understand, is this the kind of thing? Is this, you know, are these costs merited? And are we providing, you know, the kinds of services we need and within the kind of, you know, fiscal constraints that we have? So I just think we ought to keep looking at this.
So, no, we're recommending some additional staff.
That wasn't the right weed you were looking for.
Sorry.
All right, I'm going to start with the full-time community outreach, social worker. And this is a position to address the needs of our most at-risk students, so those experiencing homelessness, chronically absent, DCF, and all four involved. As DeeDee talked about, this is a district-level position, so, you know, to your point, it will assist at the Lowell. It's going to help us really monitor attendance in a systematic way across the district and reach those students early. Because when we, I tend to see these attendance issues, and we've had school refusal that's been going on for months, and it's at the high school, and it is so entrenched, it's really difficult to reverse that pattern. But when we start to look back on those records, we start to see the warning signs when students are, you know, in kindergarten, first grade, you know, they're tardy, they're absent, and it's really, it starts to build up to this. So we're going to get some systems in place and really be flagging those things. Do you want to add to that at all?
No, I just think your slide about our attendance kind of speaks volumes to this need that we have. And I just think that there's, that's that link between the home and the school, that, yes, our guidance counselors work really hard and they make lots of connections with the home, but this person, you know, on top of everything else they're doing, this is that person's sole responsibility. And I think that builds, you know, we have a similar person on the town side as well. And I think that you find that they're better at getting to the root causes of some of the issues that we have. So I, I think it's a great add to the district.
Is that, is this eight to 12?
Yep, yes.
Let's see how it goes.
But one is better than that, so.
I'm just wondering if this.
So would they collaborate with the guidance counselors and the buildings?
Yep, like, on a weekly basis, they'll go in, they generally will meet, you know, for like a half hour with the principal, the guidance counselor, so they'll just look at who's of concern, kind of run through attendance lists and see who's, who should they go talk to? You know, when people get that, we know that after five absences, you get, you know, a letter that tells you, but it's once you hit 10, that means you have interventions. So this person will really help with those interventions, so it's, yes, right work guidance.
Families as well?
The, yeah, that's, that's it, that's their, so when you have that list and you say, you know, dismiss, you know, the Smith children aren't coming to school, they'll go out and work with the Smith family to figure out how to best support them to get the kids to school.
They also have a relationship with the police and with kind of other people in town that could provide services. So if there is, like, an issue of homelessness or insecurity, they'll know where to go to get those supports.
Yep.
And we're looking for a special education teacher to increase inclusive practices at the Cuniff. The same for the Watertown High School. I think for the Cuniff, and we may need to speak to this more in the slide, I think that that's so that we have co-teaching available at each grade level. Watertown High School to kind of expand the opportunities. The Watertown, the high school's a little bit difficult because you're kind of on roller skates. There's so many different classes to kind of cover. And then we're looking at a 0.4 increase of adjustment counselor role at the high school. Currently, we have essentially 1.2 FTEs. And that's, that's made up of two counselors who are each 0.6. And we're bringing that, one of the 0.6es up to full-time. And then we're looking to bring in-house some services that are currently being provided through a contract, so contracted out, and those are visually, teacher divisional parent and orientation mobility specialist. We would get more service if we were able to hire someone for essentially two days per week, for less money. So we're hoping to be able to post for that and bring those services in-house for us to do this. We actually had a vacancy that took place this year. We had a resignation of a Coda out of our OT department. And we hired a full-time occupational therapist. And the reasoning there is that that rounds out their numbers to four throughout the district, and they're able to provide the evaluations for the students, consultation and direct services. They can do all of those functions. And we're adding, looking to add a halftime teacher, a 0.5 FTE. And that's so that we would have one additional full-day integrated program option for our families and an instructional assistant to support that program, that classroom. And at early steps, also 0.2 FTE administrative assistant. And that would ensure full-time support for parents and teachers and children in early steps. So some budget offsets.
Kathy, I have a quick question. Do we already have a one-full-day program?
We do have one full-day program. However, the need for looking for longer care, both at the pre-K level and also preschool level has, excuse me, has increased. And also the needs of some of our special ed students that do require a longer day but do not qualify for a sub-separate program. So it provides us with more opportunities to support the children.
Amy, there's currently one of the classrooms that is just in the morning, and that classroom is empty in the afternoon, so just round that out.
This would be rounded up, okay.
And the same, it's not, it's adding on the additional para-time, or the IE time, so there's.
To support that classroom.
So you have, right now, two 0.5s.
Yes.
And then a halftime early steps ESL teacher. We've looked at aligning scheduling and staffing to meet the student needs and saw that that was no longer needed. We already talked about the Coda reservation. And then overall in the district, looking at 0.5, 0.4 FTE instructional assistance, as where students are increasingly supported by special education teachers in inclusive models. The, we have a halftime guidance counselor at the Lowell. And we talked about this earlier, that we're looking at the administrative functions that are currently assigned to the guidance counselor, the NCAS oversight, class assignments and things of that nature, would be reassigned to the new assistant principal position that was talked about, allowing the remaining full-time guidance counselor at the Lowell to dedicate 80% or more of their workday to direct services, as is the recommendation of the American School Counselors Association. And Lowell also will be supported by the new community outreach social worker. We're looking to eliminate a halftime special education teacher at the HSMR. That position, when we looked through what the students' needs were, that was no longer needed. We still have that low ratio of one teacher for every student, seven students with disabilities. And we're also able to have an additional co-teaching model in grade two at the HSMR. So, any questions on those?
Kathy, you have a quick question. So the 5.4 full-time instructional assistance, is that at one building or is that district-wide?
So it's not, it was two buildings. So I think that it was three at the Cuniff and 2.4 at the Watertown High School. I believe, at least at the high school, these are positions, at least one of which is already, was somebody who left during the school year. And what our hope is, and what my experience has been and our experience has been, is that those, we are likely to lose through attrition. As I said, a lot of our IAs are going back to school to become teachers, so they're moving on to teaching positions.
And just to echo what you said earlier, that we're going to work with the principals and look at, district-wide look at IAs and just to determine, you know, based upon student need. I mean, just, just because we proposed that it might be a cut of three in the Cuniff, if we end up that we have a different need, then we would meet the need. So I don't think that we need to be pigeonholed into it's got to be from these two locations. We might find that, you know, people move in, people move out, and the requirement might shift between the buildings. So that's why we have to have that big district look at what we need to make sure that we're covering the, all the students' needs across the district. Does that make sense?
So I'm just going to do a quick overview where we're at with our out-of-district tuition. We have 54 students currently served in out-of-district placements. The total tuition we're projecting to have spent by June 30th is $4,768,355. If you take a distant straight average, that's $88,303 per student that is outplaced. And the range of actual cost for students, the low end is $33,941 and the higher end is $255,530. Special education.
This doesn't include Minuteman?
That does not include Minuteman.
Right.
Your, yes, your projected tuition amount would include the 4,500 share of the Minuteman tuition, the difference. So Minuteman now.
The 54 students, it doesn't include Minuteman?
No, the number doesn't, but the tuition amount.
But the tuition would include the special education.
Piece.
Yeah.
Piece of the Minuteman tuition.
Correct.
I don't know if it's students too, but.
Students, no.
No.
And it doesn't say students.
33, there's currently 33 students with special needs.
At Minuteman.
61 altogether, 33 with special needs. Good questions.
Thanks.
Special education transportation, we use a coin lab and that reduces costs depending on ridership. In January, as of January, 49 riders were riding in places as close as Watertown. We have day schools here, and as far away as Foxborough and Tullamore. Average cost per day per rider, $8.54. The range, $48 to $213, I'm rounding. And average in district cost is about $25. Total number of students riding in district is 79. And all but 12 of the total 128 students are on shared vehicles. There are sometimes where, if you only have one student from a region that's going to one particular day school, they end up riding alone and that's, that it's expensive. Sometimes because of a student's need, they actually have to ride a bus alone as well. So that kind of happened. And then the total anticipated cost, $1,242, sorry, $240,422. And then all the numbers.
Let's say the Lab Collaborative just recently rebid their transportation this past spring. And the rates they, quotes they received were very favorable. It will require, you know, changing some providers. But in many cases, the out-of-district routes, the transportation rates actually went down slightly, which is kind of unheard of in this market. In-district rates went up slightly. That's just the rates, this is such a high, you have to have an incredible appreciation for the work that folks in Kathy's office do, especially Nick, and trying to make sure that we have as many kids on, as appropriate on a vehicle as possible. Because it's the sharing of the transportation that really helps us to manage this budget and there's oftentimes great variability for that, for that reason, so. But that's the good news, is you don't often hear good news when it comes to transportation, but on this particular one, the rates are favorable for us for next year anyway.
Is the same thing for the Minuteman kids, or do you include their cost of passing as well?
No, the Minuteman students, the bulk of the tuition for the Minuteman students is charged to the regular day budget, which you'll see at the end of the presentation tomorrow. As is the, so the tuition and the transportation are included as part of that. Those students, those 61 students basically are assessed a rate of $16,894, I think is the tuition. That's the regular day share. And then for those that are receiving special education students, there's an additional $4,500 transportation cost for those students is also a part of the regular day budget.
Anything of note here? Oh, it goes on and on.
This piece is just, if you want to go back to this, I think this, the first few tables you saw was the entire. This piece is just, if you want to go back to this, I think this, the first few tables you saw was the entire district. So all the locations in the district, including the district-wide. This is just the district-wide budget. So I think it's worthy of note that through some, some pretty, some pretty favorable numbers here, that our special education budget overall is actually going down. Granted, it's two tenths of a percent, but two tenths of a percent is two tenths of a percent is the right direction. So a lot of work to bring students back in the district, bring the services here into the district. And I think that's clearly paying off in the district-wide budget.
I think the way that you framed it is important because it's not that you're reducing services to students. You're increasing services in district, which is less expensive.
Just a few years ago, I think we had seventy-one kids out of district. I know that changes depending on, but fifty-four kids out of district.
Yeah, we brought that free in the past year and none of that had anything to do with me. It was really the parents and the schools that did that work. And that's really key to see. I think that's what you want the parents to want, their students to be here and for us to be able to have the capacity to welcome them back. Turn it over to the principals.
This slide says elementary and secondary schools. Click around.
Oh, right, so next on the agenda is elementary schools. Well, we thank our principal for joining us this evening. A couple of things, they have the clicker, so they're going to click once. Fabulous. You know, I think one of the things, I don't know if you were in the topic anymore. We're like ships passing the night. But I think that, so when we, when we think about elementary, obviously, one of the, the major priorities that we've stated is maintaining the class size within the guidelines as much as possible. We know that we are, we try to maintain it as close as possible, but sometimes there might be a slight deviation. But one of the things that we always try to consider are the enrollment projections. And we've had enrollment projections done by NESTIC and Decision Insights. And what we're seeing basically is, you know, sure, it's a little bit of a growth, but nothing dramatic. We have to be responsive to it, but it's not, we're not seeing something in the next year or two, meaning two thousand nineteen, even, you know, two thousand twenty is a little bit of a spike at the Hosmer. But, you know, in general, the numbers are staying fairly constant, which will help us as we move forward to ensure that we have appropriate staffing within our buildings. Click.
Are those, were those numbers not considering a redistribution of the kids in the new elementary buildings?
Yes, exactly, yeah. So if you, if you click, right. So we have not at all accounted for that. You will notice that probably in two thousand twenty-one, you know, if we open up our new buildings in two thousand twenty-one, then yes, there would be a difference. We were looking at, for those of us out there who are mostly aware, but might not be fully aware, that when we renovate or reconstruct or build our elementary schools, one of the, the goals is to sort of bring the size, the enrollment between the Hosmer and the Lowell to be very close in terms of the numbers of classrooms and the numbers of students. But within both of those buildings, that our goal is to also have some flexibility if there's changes in populations. But yes, come two thousand twenty-one, that those Hosmer orange numbers will go down and the Lowell numbers will go up. And they'll seem to be pretty much on par, give or take fifteen, twenty students. But that is, that is something that is not accounted in here. And until we actually determine what the building's going to be like, we won't account for that at this point in time. But that will, I mean, I think, it wasn't really to your point, but I think what you're also speaking of is, is the reason that we're doing that is so that we're able, you know, the Cuniff, the Cuniff will always remain smaller than the Lowell and the Hosmer. But by, by bringing those two buildings together, it helps us to be more responsive to changes in, in the numbers of students that we have. So that's one of the reasons that we're going to do that. When you only have a certain amount of classrooms, small amounts of people will cause overcrowding issues. So the more that we can add in terms of classrooms, the better we are at being able to respond to changes in enrollment. So that's, that's the reason for that. Thank you for bringing that up. Click. So one of the things that, when we talk about class size and, you know, making sure that we are within those guidelines, both Mary and I have looked at the FY eighteen numbers in terms of the, the average class sizes. The numbers of students that are in the classrooms, as I can explain, like the first column on the left is FY eighteen. So that's the number of students, the number of classrooms, and then the average class sizes that we have in there. You know, there was one outlier at the Lowell this year. We worked really hard to ensure that within those, that twenty-four, that we had co-taught classrooms and that we had supports so that the students were able to, or the teachers were able to have additional support within there. So I think we did pretty well with that larger class size, but we know that that was one of the bigger ones. But one of, one of the things that we look at when we look at enrollment is, are there areas that we have a need to increase? But likewise, are there areas that potentially we can decrease? This is something that, you know, districts every year do this. Because, just because we know that, say, for example, we need to go up a classroom at the Hosmer in grade two, is there potentially another area that we might be able to go down a classroom? And that is exactly what happens. So what we're looking at in the middle column here is the redistribution of, in the Hosmer, you'll see a green five and then you'll see a Lowell red three. And basically that is because we're adding a classroom at the Hosmer, but we're reducing a classroom at the Lowell. And one of the questions, and I know that this will come up and when we get into this conversation a little bit further, you know, there was, there was a request and I totally understand why the Lowell, I'm sorry, the Hosmer requested two, two grade two teachers, which would increase that to six. But when we look down at the very bottom, which is the average class size, sorry, I'm going to hit you, Mary, I can feel it. But you see down there, just, I'm giving you a warning. You'll see that in grade two, across the board in all three buildings, the, the, the class sizes are relatively the same. So we're, we're in the guideline, which is twenty-two, we're slightly over the Hosmer. But once again, within those five classrooms, we are moving to having a co-taught classroom in the grade two. So we would ensure that if one of those classrooms has twenty-three, that there would be an additional adult in there to support the students that are in the classroom. So the ratios actually, and I am a parent of a student who was in a co-taught classroom. So he ended up having one adult for every twelve kids. And, you know, honestly, that's fantastic. So I think even though there's a slight increase there, that the decision was made for equity across the buildings and to allow for that, that redistribution that would keep us in a place where we could add many of the things that we have on that list of priorities for the district. So that's just a preview of why it is that we went with the one instead of the two.
Do you want to take questions on that now or later when we talk about the Hosmer?
I don't, I don't, I'm, it, now's fine. Go ahead.
I was just wondering, how, do you know how many of those classrooms in the second grade will be twenty-three versus twenty-one or twenty-two?
So I, I don't know exactly. I mean, the, the Hosmer principal will be working through that. You know, I think you would have, based on that, probably three classes of twenty-three and two of twenty-two. But you might have, you know, one class for, I don't know. I mean, it's, I can't tell you exactly how many classrooms we're going to have, how many students. And then also based on needs. You know, if you have one of those classrooms that doesn't have a co-taught situation, you might have a lower class size. But if you have one that does have that co-taught situation, you might have the larger class size. So I think that, I can't tell you right now how many they're going to be. Bob, do you have a sense at this point or?
Twenty-two and twenty-three right now are the class sizes. Probably, you know, we've kind of created a rough draft of our assignments for next year.
Do you remember, I mean, and I'm not putting Bob on the slide because this is a very fluid process. We have not said classes, like, don't think that in any way, shape or form. But in that grade two, between the one class that will potentially be co-taught, do you know how many might actually have, like, an instructional assistant?
There's one instructional assistant for the grade levels. So the teacher in the co-taught classroom is there, the instructional assistant is in another classroom with about three students that have IEPs, but that's of support from the ESL teacher, our reading teachers and tutors.
So there'll, there'll be a lot of adults to support the students in those classrooms. So that's kind of the, I mean, one of the points that we would make as well. So that's.
Yeah. My concern is that these kids, which is awesome, this year and last year have had like eighteen and nineteen kids in the class, their class in first grade and second, in kindergarten and first grade. And that's been really awesome. And it's something I tell people about all the time that I love about Watertown. Even when you compare it to Belmont, those, our numbers are lower in class size and I think that's great. So my concern is for this, this grade of kids, which my child is in, going from the smaller, the eighteen, nineteen to twenty-two, twenty-three, that's a big difference, I think, in second grade. I was just, I wanted to hear more about the decision to do the five versus the six.
So, so I think that in, in, I mean, to, there's a reason why the guidelines are as they are. Meaning there's a reason why they gradually increase. So you go from, you know, twenty for K and one, twenty-two for two and three, and then twenty-four for four and five. And that is, that is because the nature of a kindergartner and the nature of a first grader, honestly, are, the, the needs are such that you want to have lower classes, there are emerging readers, you know, there are emerging, you know, mathematicians. Having that, that ability to have that smaller classes in those two grade levels is really important. But you'll see, it's always been, you know, when we hit grade two, when things, and Allison over there, I'm not going to throw her on the spot, but we know that grade one is the, this crucial year for reading, where you start at the year and kids are everywhere. And then as they get through grade one, towards the end, they start to get a little closer together. Doesn't mean they're all together. But grade two, you're not going to find as much of a disparate, say, for example, literacy instruction. So it's, it's not just Watertown. The, the guidelines are like this kind of in elementary, that as they get a little older, you can anticipate having larger class sizes because they become a little bit more homogeneous in terms of their learning and, and you start shifting more to content and less about really building that literacy and numeracy. So I hear what you're saying, but there is always going to be a, a point in all of the schools where you go from that nice smaller K one into a little bit of a larger two, three. And then even in, in four, five, you start to get into the maybe, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four. You know, we actually are pretty fortunate. We're not across the board like that. I mean, our class sizes are pretty small, even in the, the upper grades. But that's the reason why, is because the nature of the learner is definitely changing as they enter into second grade.
And speaking about the Hosmer specifically, if we get new kids registering over the summer that are coming into grade one that are in the Hosmer catchment area, will they be, will you be looking at putting them at other schools to avoid getting up to like twenty-four and?
Yeah, one of the, the, Watertown has a very favorable policy for, because of the fact that we only have three schools and we only have a certain number of classrooms, that if you're a new move-in and in that one particular class and in that one particular school that you can't, there's not room in that, that end, then yes, we would, we've done that. We've asked to have those students be at a different school. It's not the best situation, but given the fact, again, that we only have three schools, that is what we have been asked to do.
So would you consider the twenty-two, twenty-three, the final cut? Or would you be going higher if you had more kids coming in?
I think we would try to maintain that as much as possible. And honestly, truth be told, and, and we, we kind of talked about this last year at the Lowell because as you see in grade three last year, we had twenty-four, which was two above. You know, we monitored that very closely and we had a discussion about, you know, should we add, we honestly, should we add another classroom? So we got to a point, because you see that our, our numbers are twenty-two in the other two schools. So it's not exactly like we have an abundance of space. So, you know, it was about July last year that we made a, a decision, and it was close, whether we should add another classroom, which would, you know, we'd have to think about it financially, how we would get that done. But we would have figured it out because it would have had what happened. Or could we look at staff and make sure that we had instructional assistant support in the classroom or have a co-taught classroom to mitigate the numbers? And, you know, I mean, sure, the class sizes are large at the Lowell and, yeah, wouldn't have been great if they were twenty-two, but I think the students have fared very well with those sizes. So ideally, we wouldn't go much higher. And if we had to go, if there was like a, six kids all moved into grade two, then we'd have a conversation about, do we need to add another classroom? You know, you run into other issues when you do that too, which is like space.
Right.
Like make sure you have enough to put them.
Philosophy.
This is why in two thousand twenty-one, I, you know, we will have literally classrooms that will be utilized hopefully for science, science or FLS or, you know, areas that, yeah, maybe. But the point was, it was like, yay! But the point would be that if we needed to move, because all of a sudden we had a year that was a bubble year, that we'd be able to take that classroom and, you know, and have that as a classroom. Right now, we don't have that built into these buildings. So when we have to add a classroom, it becomes very challenging. Nina can certainly speak to that. She's faced that many times in the Lowell as well, you know, having to move people around. And it's, it's not going to stop us, but it's just another thing. Like if the decision at the Lowell, when we had, we had an issue with the, we couldn't, there was not really a classroom to put them in. So that was the other point, when you get to twenty-four, is it, how are we going to do it? And can we do it better with, with supporting the teacher with additional supports? Or, you know, figuring out displacing other people to make that classroom work? So a lot of, a lot of things go into that. And we will always be assessing that up until the very end. And we are certainly open, if we needed to, to add another teacher if there was a big move-in.
Could I ask you, just in addition to that point? I know, I know Bobby, you were very thoughtful approach toward placements in each classroom. Kind of thinking strategically about, you know, kids who have, you know, ESL kids and, you know, ES, English language learners and, and so kind of grouping needs together. So that is also another way, and I'm not going to speak to you, but I know that's a way that we talked about providing additional adult support in classrooms that are a little bit larger so that, because, I mean, it's the teaching and learning that matters. It's the content that we care about in terms of, as a parent, and making sure that it's an environment where there's enough attention that your child is getting the kind of, you know, content that is appropriate. So do you want to just talk a little bit about your process for that?
Sure. Kind of, go next.
Oh, wait.
Yeah, so we started our process with placement by being more efficient with the use of our staff. The co-teaching was a big deal. We started that in two thousand thirteen with fifth grade. And we've got it down to grade three last year. We're going to add grade two. So we look at the, the students' needs and we looked at the number of IAs that are required. We grouped shared IAs together, which Watertown has had a history of not being efficient with a lot of the things we do. We would say a child gets a one-to-one, a one-to-two, a one-to-three, but in fact, they need another adult support in the classroom. So we changed the wording on IEPs. We provided the right people. So we're able to group the students with their needs and with the support that they need. And it's a much more efficient way to do it and saves on staff, it helps the children, and it makes placement more successful.
So I'm going to add just one, one other thing and I, I'm, figure out how best to say this. So you know that we've added the math coach and we're going to fund another literacy coach, say, for example. And there's one, one thing, you make decisions. And, you know, we made, we made some priority decisions about what we wanted to fund. And it's, I think that there's a point to say, if this year we have twenty-three students at the Hosmer in a classroom and we actually have a math coach who's going to be able to support that, all the teachers in terms of increasing their ability to deliver math instruction. I, I would rather have that, honestly, and I know this, as a second grade parent, this probably doesn't sound great, than not have that support at all and have that teacher for a hundred and eighty days not getting that in-depth instruction and support for math. So I think that we made those decisions about how are we going to move forward with improving our instructional practice? And, you know, and that was one of those hard conversations that we had. And, and that's, I think, where we ended up with the, the five instead of the six. Because we were able to add a math coach and a literacy coach as well. So, so that's, that's another reason.
I just wanted to make a, a point that this grade particularly in Hosmer, I haven't looked at the detailed numbers of the Cuniff and the Lowell, but it's higher than, if it continues to be higher in future years, then, you know, if, if a hundred and thirteen kids go from first grade to second grade and then the following year to third grade and fourth grade and you don't see a drop, I saw there were, you know, projections for slight drops, maybe down to ninety-eight or something like that at the Hosmer. This, this grade and the grade or two underneath them that are expected to be at this higher end, it's just something I think to think about if, if there's this bubble of these grades. And I don't know if that will pass, that will stop and it'll drop back down. Hopefully, the new buildings and the, and the, and the, you know, the leveling off of the size of the Lowell and the Hosmer will help that. But it's just, I think it's something to keep an eye on for this grade as they go forward.
Yes, yeah, whenever we have bubble classes, I mean, I'm not, you know, when you look in, in general, the, the grade twos, we have actually bigger, bigger bubbles coming. So I think that, you know, you absolutely, you have to make sure that, that it could follow. I mean, we had a bubble back from, I think it was, what are they now? Soccer? No, right, sorry. No, right, sorry. It was somewhere in the, but as, there's always kind of a, you have to watch them along the way, all the way through middle school and all the way as they even enter to high school to make sure that you're anticipating having enough staff to cover them. I, I actually, you know, looking at the numbers, I think that, that there might be other bubbles that were also being considered as they move through. But yes, you do have to pay attention to that and make sure that they don't always end up in the larger classes all the way through their twelve years of academia.
And I do, I do just wanted to say that I appreciate, again, the small class sizes and the commitment that Watertown has. I think it's been really important. And I also appreciate the integration that you guys were talking about and, and stuff like that that makes it such a great, the classroom experience great. And my daughter's had some great, I don't know what the terms are, but instructional aids the last two years, or whoever that second adults and the adults that are coming in. That's been the, the number of adults in the classroom at varying times or throughout the day. I appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. So I think I'll, I'll hand it over to Mina to talk about the kind of.
Okay. All right, great. Okay, so the first slide up, it is up on the screen. Just a demographic overview of Kind of. And you can see from that first area that the number of students that kind of has remained pretty much consistent. And this year, we're really enjoying a healthy class size. I think if you wander the school from grades pre-K to five, you'll see that pretty much teachers are comfortable with the number of students and managing this year very nicely. And even this year have been able to give back the music room, which last year we had to share with the art room. So that's a big plus for us because I feel like everyone has their own space and they're very comfortable with navigating through the school year. So I'm happy to say that that has worked out quite nicely for us. In terms of MCAS scores, I think Dr. McGinnis tonight and, and also Dr. Dolston have really set the scene for describing the wonderful things that are going on in Watertown in terms of supporting curriculum, but also supporting ways that we can improve our MCAS scores throughout the district. I know that our teachers are really focused on providing instruction. It's going to be a match to student needs. We're trying to really keep students involved in the classroom so that they're really gaining the instruction and the, the learning that they'll be able to apply in all settings, including standardized testing. Okay. This next slide just shows enrollment projections, projections for Kind of. And again, our increases seem pretty consistent. And I don't think we have any areas that we really need to worry about in the next few years. And again, we're looking forward to the renovation, which will accommodate all of the growing needs that we have at Kind of. I did want to say that this year at Kind of, we are running three kindergartens, which we have not done in a long time. We actually also have currently a full cohort of eighteen pre-K students. And in the past, we've always had to run a pre-K K, but this year we are currently running eighteen students in pre-K, three kindergartens, three first grade classes, classrooms, and three third grade classrooms as well. And so with the renovation, we will bring all of our class, all of our grade levels up to three classrooms in each grade. All right, so some of the accomplishments that we can talk about at Kind of are also district-wide accomplishments, because I think one of the things that I do want to reinforce is I'm really happy to say that the calibration that's going on in the district is wonderful as well. I know that makes me feel good as a principal, because whenever I talk to my colleagues, Bob and Stacy, we're all pretty much doing the same thing. And that's thanks to all of the programming and all the initiatives that really are cohesive and make sense in the district, not only for one school, but for all of the elementary schools. And then we're also looking forward to the spiraling that will occur from elementary to middle and high school. So there's a really nice, healthy environment that is conducive to teaching and learning. And I think we all feel really proud about that. So just to reinforce, one of the accomplishments this year that Kind of is enjoying is we introduced a co-teaching model in grades K to five, where classroom teachers are partnering with either a reading specialist, an ELL teacher, or a special educator. And as a principal, I think that's the one, most wonderful thing that I'm seeing in our building. I see a lot of collaboration with teachers. I see teachers really teaming together and sharing their expertise and their skills. And as a result, students, students are really benefiting from that. I usually take a walk in the building during core instructional time, during the core reading blocks and mathematics blocks. And I see a lot of thinking a lot with teachers, where you can tell that they plan together and they're delivering a lesson to students, when you're modeling to students, some of the thinking that they'll be putting forth in terms of helping the master content and skills. So a lot of that is really wonderful to see. Additionally, we've moved to a standards-based instructional model in grades K to five. And a lot of that is credited to all of the curriculum coordinators, who have really put a lot of practices in place, brought in a lot of new curricular initiatives, and also some professional development that really has aligned the curriculum so that teachers really understand what they're teaching and they see the progression from one skill to the next. And again, it's a win-win for students because I think the mastery is a little more seamless when they really see the connections from one skill to the next skill. We also this evening talked about the Teaching and Learning Alliance. And at Kind of, we have three teachers and two reading specialists that are participating in that training. And again, they're collaborating with their colleagues at, at grade level and sharing some of the skills and expertise that they're taking on as well. So it's not only three teachers and two reading specialists, but some of that is infused throughout the school and some of the literacy practices that are taking place during readers workshops. So that's a wonderful initiative as well. I know Elizabeth talked earlier about introducing math teacher leaders in grades K to five. And again, that's another experience where these teacher leaders are really taking on some of the professional development that occurs as a district and also infusing that in our school at Kind of. And again, you know, it's something that starts district-wide and then transfers to the school, but we're all doing the same thing in all three schools. So it's a wonderful opportunity for everybody. We've introduced Spanish at the grade one level, thanks to Adam. And that's a wonderful experience as well. I know our Spanish teacher at Kind of is outstanding. And the kids in kindergarten and first grade, it's amazing to see some of the Spanish instruction that they, some of the knowledge that they've taken on and some of the conversations that's taken place with very young children in our school.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So on the first bullet, the co-teaching model, so do you have co-teaching with, in like, in all those grades?
Mm-hmm.
For, and do you, are some of them ELL teachers? And is that like a, is that?
So last spring, when we started to talk about co-teaching, and again, you know, I know through a lot of district discussions with Kathy Damaris, she was really reinforcing the importance of co-teaching. And I really always believed in that as a teacher, not just as a principal. When I, when I was a classroom teacher, I always believed strongly that if you collaborated with somebody, it would be a richer experience for your students. So at Kind of, what we did last spring is we had a lot of grade fourteen meetings and I really had the support of my team chair. And we really looked at, you know, the number of students on IEPs in each grade level, the number of ELL learners in each grade level, and the number of students that needed tier-two support for reading. And not that we put them in specific classrooms, but we tried to form some cohesive groups where kids had similar strategies that we could put together. We didn't really do anything to, you know, we wanted to keep the integrity of having a heterogeneous classroom. We didn't want to compose classrooms that had all special needs, students are all ELL, students are all kids that were tier-two readers. So we kind of took some core groups and started to really move them around and form some grade-level combinations so that we could put teams of teachers in each room that either supported tier-two reading or ELL learners or the special education piece. And so this year, what, what we ended up doing is we have one classroom, one fourth grade that has, is a true co-taught model, where there is a special educator and a generalist together all day. And then the rest of our classrooms each have the support of either a reading specialist or a special educator, or an ELL teacher during, during the reading block for ninety minutes, and also during the math block. And possibly some classrooms have it during the writing block as well. And so that's what co-teaching looks like. At Kind of, everybody has at least a hundred and eighty minutes of co-taught, if not a little bit more, based on the staffing that we have. Okay.
I mean, that, and that's, sorry. I mean, just in general, like co-teaching doesn't have to be all day long. I mean, it's great if it can, I mean, sure, we have some places where it actually can be all day long. But it's, you know, sometimes a co-teacher is in two different, I mean, I'm just echoing what you said. Because I think sometimes you get lost in the fact that it has to be all day long. But it's not always that way. Sometimes it is, which is great, but sometimes it isn't.
So, no, that's great, it's interesting to hear. Is, is that, I'm, I'm sure co-teaching and whatever iteration you're using looks different in those schools, but I'm interested to know, is that kind of, that same strategy being used in all three schools? I mean, I guess.
I mean, I, I think that, like, there are some ESL, you know, co-taught blocks, whenever possible. The reading is a little unique in, in Mina's building, but I think it just depends on which staff you have and how you can, how you can group. And sometimes in a smaller building, it's easier to do that. I mean, that's one of the joys of that. But, you know, I think that we are looking at some further opportunities outside of even just the special education partnerships. And it might not even just be co-teaching. I mean, there might be some other ways to look at delivery of services.
Okay, I might just, I just look, we, we looked at, so it's a lot, the, the trends at Hosmer in particular, and, you know, the special education numbers are going down and the ELL numbers are going up. And looking at, you know, I have a kindergartner, second and fourth, and just looking at some of the classrooms, seeing the large numbers of kids who speak different languages coming. And it's just a really interesting model that you're using, and it sounds, especially for the language piece.
It's interesting, because I, at the beginning, I worried that teachers wouldn't get along, but really, they've gotten along really well this year because I think they're sharing expertise. And they're seeing that they're benefiting from each other's support in the classroom. And you can imagine during a reading block of ninety minutes, if you have two adults in there, you really can see more than just the two or three groups that you would see by yourself. So it's kind of like a win-win for them. So it's, I think it's working out really well.
Great, thank you.
So just a, a few additional accomplishments maintained and regularly updated literacy and math grids. I know Elizabeth and Allison talked about that this year. And I think one of the things that I've seen improved at Kind of is that since we have district-wide data grids now, the data gets in there in a timely manner and it's used in a timely manner, whereas before it would get in there and we would wait a while and then the results would kind of be outdated, because you'd have new data that would need to be informing your instruction. So they're really putting the data in, looking at it, and informing their instruction with results as well. So good, good teaching and learning. And then we also implemented, because of the co-teaching that's going on in a variety of different ways at Kind of, we also had to add a co-planning period, because one of the dilemmas we faced at the beginning of the year is if teachers are co-teaching, then they need time to plan. So what we do at Kind of is we have a, an A through E day, a six-day schedule, where I give them twenty minutes every other day during recess to, to plan as a team. And that has been helping them so that they really get a chance to collaborate with one another. And then we've also hosted an international fair, which we plan on doing again this year. So goals that we'd like to support by the upcoming budget is to expand the co-teaching model in grades, grades K to five at Kind of, to include co-teaching during literacy and math, to refine standard-based teaching practices, again, as a district, continue to partner with the TLA, Teaching and Learning Alliance, and establish coaching partnerships in addition, in additional grade levels. And those would be two and four at Kind of, and possibly grade five, because it's been an outstanding experience for the students. And also, as we spoke about this evening, to include Spanish instruction in grade two next year and maintain Spanish instruction in grades K and one, three times per week. Additionally, to implement a social.
I'm sorry, just, maybe I just got confused here then. On the, back on the co-teaching, the first bullet that you had there?
Sure.
So where are you co-teaching now if you're not doing literacy and math? Maybe I missed that.
We are doing it in every grade level, just to expand it a little bit more. There are some classrooms that only have it for sixty minutes. To expand it to nine, it would be even better. So just to.
Oh, to expand.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I, I read that to me to, to add it to, but you already have it there. You want to make it longer.
Right. Just made it a little longer. Again, to just implement the social-emotional curriculum. I know I've been part of that team this year with Dr. McGinnis. And we're really looking forward to providing teachers with an additional resource that they will have so that they can support students with any social-emotional learning that needs to take place in the classroom. Continue to refine best practices around the use of data to inform instruction. Refine the building-based schedule in order to create time for grade-level teams to meet consistently, in order to plan. I think that's an important piece that, as a school, we'd like to continue to focus on. And continue to support before-school programs, such as the Reading Buddies program and Number Sense Power, to provide tier-two support as well. Okay, and Kind of recommended budget additions and offsets. Again, district-wide, we're looking to continue to build our classroom libraries to provide that support during independent reading so that students have rich materials to use during that time. I'd like the additional special education teachers so that I can, again, increase my co-teaching model at Kind of. I'd like an additional point-five reading specialist to support tier-two interventions as well in our school. And the offset of that would be the instructional assistants. And an additional ELL teacher, based on projected number of ELL students at Kind of, with an increase. These are unfunded, unfunded budget requests. And then a point-two art teacher, which is also unfunded. Does anybody have any questions?
Fourteen percent. What's the driver there? We may be varying that.
A lot of this comes from the, again, push.
Oh, thank you, I got it. Okay, you told me like twelve times, I should remember at some point.
Teachers.
We'll get one more.
Lucky number thirteen.
Thank you.
So I was just going to, before we transition, I, I mentioned this before, that right now we are, and so did Teresa, about doing an evaluation of our ESL programming. I know that was an ask here, and you're actually going to see a reduction at the Hosmer. That's not that our numbers are going down. What that is, is that we need to just look at how we're going to be scheduling ESL. And even Teresa's exciting, what she saw today, I mean, there's so many ways to do it. But I think that, you know, staffing-wise, we just want to make sure that we're doing it correctly. And so we think that, you know, not funding that one and potentially doing a reduction at the Hosmer is not going to jeopardize how it is that we deliver those services. It's just going to be a shift in terms of either grouping of kids or being more efficient or, you know, having a newcomer class. I mean, there's, there's, there's options that we're not necessarily doing right now that we believe that if we re-look at scheduling, that we won't have that need for that additional staff at the Kind of.
And then, and then we would, that would be implemented in FY nineteen?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep, I mean, I think, to Bob's credit, he spent a lot of time this year, a lot of time, wrangling and wrestling with the, the, the numbers of students and the staff and the way that they're grouped, to try to really make sure that we were meeting all of their needs. And so it really did cause, like, oh, well, this group of students, actually, if we bring them with this group of students, who might not even be, you know, in the same grade level, but they're the same levels, you know, how do you deliver services different? Because, you know, if you just think of them as isolated units, then you end up not having enough staff. But if you start grouping and saying, oh, we've got kids that are very similar, you know, in these three different grades, and we pull them together, it's more effective in terms of delivering services. So that's, that's one of the things that, you know, again, to Bob's credit, he spent a lot of time working through that scheduling. It was, took some time. Yes.
So that's a shift we'll see in eight, in the fall.
Yep, yeah. And I think at the end of the, and we'll, like Dr. McGinnis said, that we'll provide you with the, the analysis of what the program evaluation yields. You know, and I, but the, the first glance from, you know, just looking at our programming, I think if we keep the, the, the staff as we kind of have it right now, even with these reductions, we could actually do even more for our students. So I think there was almost like, wow, think of the possibilities, think of the co-teaching. You know, how you count time with students. We, we might not be doing that efficiently, like, you know, in a co-teaching model, that can count for their service delivery. So, you know, it's, so we're just rethinking everything when it comes to ESL in a way that I think is going to be very beneficial for the kids. Sorry. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Cook again.
I keep on.
All right. Hosmer School. Again, the, the thing that stood out to me when, when you look at this is we're, we're looking at an increase in English language learners. And you would think that, well, maybe there's an upward rise, but there's fifteen percent to thirteen to twenty-one percent. So after really digging into our English language learners who take the WETA access and they get a number and it tells you how much of service they need, we looked at what that service means. Is it all pull-out? Do you have to pull them into a separate classroom? we looked at what that service means. Is it all pull-out? Do you have to pull them into a separate classroom? Or can you work with them in the classroom? And we found the most effective way was a combination of the two. So they had some time out, some time in the classroom. You can call that co-teaching or push-in, but it's services delivered while the children are still in the classroom with the general ed students. And that's what I think Kathy talked about earlier, is the important part. The more time spent in the classroom for all students is better for them. Students with disabilities, we're kind of happy with this, because we saw this going from twenty-one point five percent to seventeen point three, which I think is around the average for the state, as a success because of our co-teaching. So we have two groups in the classroom, two instructors, and you're pulling groups aside, and you're having stations, and moving from area to area. A student who doesn't have an IEP but is struggling can work with students who are getting that extra support. So they don't need to get any kind of additional pull-out, additional support. They're getting it in the classroom, and they're making progress. So we owe that to kind of, we think that's a big success. And we do believe that in time, we will, are going to improve our MCAS scores. I've said before, I think there are three pillars: dedicated and committed parents and students, we had that. We have need-good teachers, we had that. We just didn't have that curriculum aspect, and we're getting that. But I figured there's a fourth pillar too, and that's the community, the town council, the town manager, everyone who's allowing the school committee to get money into these programs. Because everything we're doing this year needed to be funded. And we're seeing immediate success, if nothing else, right now, just with the general kind of anecdotal feeling that things are better for the students and for the teachers. They really have those professional learning discussions with the coaches and the tutors and coordinators. And again, this is the projection. It's interesting to see that there looks like people are leaving each year after grade two. It used to be after kindergarten, because some people felt that families stayed here for the full day K and then left for first grade, but we're not seeing that anymore. So I don't know if it's a wave, or if it's a bubble, or if it's just really happy.
People love Watertown.
People love Watertown. As Kimo Carter says, happy kids learn and happy towns teach. Accomplishments, we have expanded inclusive practices. And to Kendra's point, there is, you can create a co-taught class for the need. You don't create it and wait for them to come. So we found that we're getting a lot of students in, that were ESL students. What does that mean? And I kind of dug into it quite a bit this year. At ESL, is a lot of it is just really good literacy instruction, sometimes delivered in the classroom, sometimes out. So we moved one of our ELL teachers to kindergarten and had a co-teach. So we have a co-taught model in kindergarten, and we have some additional push-in or co-taught incidents in other grade levels as well. We thought if we got it to K one, two, it'd be very effective. Three, four, five were the co-taught classes that we had focused on, and we're going down to grade two, because there's a need. We have a lot of students in grade two that have a need for a shared aid or additional adult in the classroom, and they have IEPs. So we thought that would be a good focus for us. And we have very eager teachers to get the training to do that. One other area we've had is, a lot of students that are on IEPs, we're finding, had a need for a specialized reading program. What that means is very trans, well, very confusing. What is a specialized reading program? So it's really a reading program delivered by a special educator. So having them at the grade level and in the classroom is the most effective way to do that.
So can you just, what is a specialized reading program?
There are different things. Wilson is a reading program that's specialized. The foundations is for earlier, K to two, and Wilson in three to five. So you're really focusing on different aspects of teaching of reading.
Okay.
What you can't do is lock it down and say, the child needs Wilson, because that's not an answer for everything. So we want someone who can differentiate very well. We have great relationships with some of our community members, the Brigham House especially, our close neighbors, kind of like our condo association. They visit us, we visit them, and the kids and the adults get a lot out of that, so we're really happy with that. Our veterans group comes every Memorial Day. We have them in for Veterans Day as well. And we have written cards and letters to them when they go to the hospital, because unfortunately, that's an aging population for the most part. Police and fire have been so helpful. They come into the schools, they're doing instruction on safety with strangers, internet safety, and the fire department's been doing a series with the third grade on how to be safe at home, and how to have escape routes and things like that. Watertown Public Library, and again, thanks to our great site council at the Hosmer School, they've connected with Watertown Public Library and started some after-school programs. And one of them is a reading book club. And the librarian from the public library comes to the school, will be coming to the school once our books are out. They'll be writing some book programs. And there's also a engineering course that will be starting up in the spring. Again, all-parent, site council, PTO-driven, which is great. The lab's classrooms are consistent throughout the district. We're really happy with that. We're going to expand that next year and add different grade levels. And this went to, to slide before we finished, but we hired three Title I literacy tutors, and that's someone that's working less than fifteen hours a week, that works with children in specialized reading programs. But we've also hired a math tutor, and she started too. So she's picking up some of the support for the teachers in math. So those are other examples of co-teaching and support. And again, that's the phonics and foundations.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
The grade level, the two-way communication systems, could you just talk a little more about those?
Sure. So one of the district goals was two-way communication. Rather than just getting a newsletter home every so often or a nice website, how does the parents respond back? And so an example would be grade four has something called CSO, which I know some of you are familiar with. Things are videotaped without the children in it. So literally, you look at the screen, and you'll see someone doing the math problem. And you just see the figures being written and a voiceover of a child telling you what's happening. So passwords given to the parents, and the teacher puts that on. The parents have the opportunity to look at that and then comment on their child's work. Great job with your math problem today. So we have people in different grade levels are doing something different and sharing it at our staff meetings. So by the end of the year, we'll have one consistent thing for each grade level. So everyone at least is sending something home that's good across the board.
So it's going to be by grade level, or is it going to be school-wide?
It depends. We're going to look at it at the end of the year as a, as a school. And the staff are going to kind of take a look at them. We've seen some good models. They've shown CSO, and there's a couple of other things teachers are working on. So if everyone, if there's a K-two model, that's great. If there's a three-five or all the way through, we're not sure yet.
How do you deal with the parents who's, where English isn't their first language in this two-way communication?
Good point. So we have some increased need for translation, and we're working with that. We're trying to get something so it's a little bit more instantaneous, but right now, we have to wait for it to be translated. There's always Google Translate and things like that, but it's always just a little bit hard.
Yes. And that, so that's done on, like, a case of family-by-family basis with the teachers, or that we'll be doing?
We're trying to, actually, a language-by-language basis, because the more need for different languages is what we're trying to focus on.
Great.
And one of the things that we're working with is parent liaisons. So we had a pilot program at the middle school for parent liaisons with the three most commonly spoken languages. And we wouldn't be able to do it for the thirty-seven languages that are spoken, but certainly, we have a critical mass, having somebody who could kind of be the conduit of information. They're not necessarily even, I mean, they're not the translator, but they're the person who kind of has the cultural aspects that bring families into the building. So we're working on, actually, with one in an earlier budget line, to try to expand that, to provide a little bit of that in elementary schools as well.
That's great, because at the last PTO meeting at Hosmer, there was a teacher who came in, presented an idea about having like a committee of people to welcome new families, or families, you know, where English wasn't their first language. I think it will contribute to, hopefully, it would contribute in the long run to more families being involved, because you end up seeing the same parents at the meetings and stuff, so more parents.
Yeah, representing the students, yeah.
Improve our service delivery in math, and I think these things are already happening. And we've got, our math coach is just so high-energy and a very personable person, who is very, if you've ever been a teacher and a math coach comes in, or a literacy coach, there's always a little bit of, well, what do you know that I don't know? So she approaches so inoffensively, that she's really working well with the staff, I think, across the district, but definitely for us. So she's doing a great job. Thanks to Elizabeth for putting all that together. And the math assessments are so important for us, because we can't use anything else to drive instruction, unless we know where they are. So that's really helpful. Our Makerspace is turning very interesting up in the library. Roger Dubuque is the librarian, and he's done a lot of training on Makerspace. We have 3D printers, vinyl cutters, paper carts that teachers can check out. And he will have completed one project for classroom by the end of the year. And I think the PTO will also be using it for after-school projects as well. Goals that are supported, literacy, math, extracurricular, I think I talked a little bit about that. And Lily's gone, but one of her questions was, how do you know if this is working? And what we're doing is, we've been following a cohort of second-grade students this year, who were in first grade last year, who took foundations. They get foundations this year. So we're tracking them and comparing them to student assessments that didn't take the foundations and seeing, just sort of for us, what the, what the improvement is. The social-emotional well-being of the students. When we get our SEL program together, I've had the opportunity to work with both of them. And they're both great programs, as Dr. McGinnis said. And whichever one the district goes with, you can't go wrong. So that'll be a very positive thing. And what we're hoping for is the, we asked for the grade-two teacher. And again, the classroom libraries that you heard about earlier, it was for Rita's workshop. You need a lot of books that are leveled at different levels. And the more money for books, the better. Can't go wrong with books. And by being more efficient with our assignment of students and assignment of caseloads, we were able to reduce by point five special educator, the same with ESL. It doesn't mean we're getting fewer students, or the need is less, but the way we're able to support in the classroom, I think, we'll be able to help fund other things. And that's the second, second-grade teacher that we talked about earlier.
Yeah, just to mention, part of the reason why you see a significant reduction in the salary is because the preschool staff, which was, yes, the preschool is located at the Hosmer preschool, at the Hosmer building, as well as the Phillips School. The staff had all been coded in our account structure to the Hosmer School as their location. And so we created within our chart of accounts a new location specifically for the preschool and have reallocated those salaries from the Hosmer to the preschool, so that we're subtracting that as if it were its own building, as it essentially almost is. It's a program within a building.
And, thanks to the whole elementary school.
Mary, just to say, like, just saying, I think that is, this is my first time going through, seeing all of these details, but it's hard to imagine trying to understand it with all of it piled together like it was before. So I just really appreciate you pulling all this out, because it seems so clear to me, being the first time I've really run through this on a detail, and I can't imagine trying to figure it out before. So thank you. Yeah, it's helpful.
Sorry, can I just ask one more quick question? Just because I noticed that for the LOL and the kind of presentations, it had the continuation of the FLESS program to grade two, but yours didn't mention it, but that doesn't mean that it's not continuing, correct?
No, it doesn't. I just, I'm not fond of that. I'm sorry. Getting out there.
Yeah, okay, great. Just, I mean...
There are actually a number of things that were districts related on the LOL and kind of slide, or the, on the kind of slides that weren't included there, and they're all part of the...
Yeah, I was sure, almost sure, but then I was like, just have to make sure, because that's another one of the amazing things about Watertown that I feel so positive about and lucky that my daughters have the opportunity for. So I'm thankful for everyone who's supported that program over the last two years and made it happen, budget-wise, teaching-wise.
So, good evening. I'm Stacy Seale, and the principal of the LOL. So I'll go over the demographic overview. I think that LOL in general, other than the third grade, where we have a significant higher class size, for third grade, we've, we're experiencing a nice, healthy class size. We're benefiting across the board. We, you know, we're averaging around eighteen, nineteen, so that's really nice. Our economically disadvantaged, our English-language learners and our students with disabilities is pretty steady. You know, there's not a huge change over time. I think it goes just with the actual population of the building at that moment. I think this year, we're slightly increased on our students with disabilities for 2018. I think it's a little bit up, but again, it's keeping with the trend that we already have established. Our MCAS scores, you can see there at the bottom. I think that there is a lot of hope that we're going to see some significant changes in those scores this year. I think especially in the areas of mathematics, I see a dramatic differences in the classroom. And the teachers are really focusing deeply on areas of weakness and really diving in and collecting a lot of data, and then changing construction and creating instructional groupings inside the school. So I think I'm looking forward to seeing how that turns out next year. Our projections over time, they're very steady. So again, it makes sense to reduce the second-grade classroom this year in the, for the upcoming school year. In fact, we've, oops, sorry. One of the things that I can say is, we actually lost three more second graders just this week. So I really think that that was a very good idea. I think that we're going to be in a very healthy classroom size for next year. We're looking at about twenty to twenty-one, I think, by the year's end. So that's, I don't think that should be a worry moving forwards. So our accomplishments, I think the accomplishments this year are very much shared across the district. Literacy, we began our implementation of the Balanced Literacy Program, focusing in our core instruction. We partnered with TLA like the other two schools. We've expanded our foundations phonics curriculum. We hired a district coach, and we hired three building-based Title I tutors that are supporting our reading and our reading specialists, to really make sure that we're covering the building and getting some really good intervention. Our math curriculum, the alignment to the standards K through five, that work has been, I think, deep, intense, and very, it built the capacity this year of our teachers, I think, across the school. But I think the leadership aspect of it with our math leaders was incredible. I think it really helped to highlight some areas of, that were not being covered through their deep work. And then it's really addressed areas where we needed to go deeper. The math coach, again, I think, to echo all the things that I don't want to be redundant, and I know people are kind of like, it's getting late. But I really have to say, the coaching and the work that Liss has been doing has been incredible this year. And it's been taken with such enthusiasm by our teachers. And I think that is really the hardest thing, is to convince teachers when they're going through any type of change, or having more staff in their classrooms, to make them feel that it is really benefiting, it's for their benefit, and not something that's coming in and being kind of, as an, from an observation or a level of evaluation. So I think it's been wonderful. Hired a Title I tutor also in math. We've been, you know, consistently having monthly professional development geared towards all of the pedagogical changes that were going on. And we acquired the TenMarkz online program, which, again, I think that's really getting our kids ready for the types of strategies, the types of skills that they need to use on the computer that will benefit them in going to a standard-based MCAS, going to the MCAS on the computer. A lot of the things that we need to get them ready for is not just the new test that they've put in place, but also how to approach taking the test on a computer. And TenMarkz is really helping them with those tools. So, and we're also have TIC to learn, and that we've spent a lot of time to really get the kids on the computer. So when they get there on the day of the assessment, they're feeling very comfortable. So when they get there on the day of the assessment, they're feeling very comfortable. Co-teaching, am I not pressing in time? Okay. So other accomplishments, co-teaching, I think, would be up there with a huge accomplishment this year. We have a co-taught model classroom in K through five. And then we also have more than one in two through five. So we have one in kindergarten, two, one in first grade, one, two in second grade, two in third, two in fourth, and two in fifth. So, and in the other classrooms where they're not co-taught with a special educator, they're taught with, taught with an ESL teacher. So I really think that the full building is in a co-taught classroom mode. And we have our students spending the majority of their day inside the classroom, which was a substantial change from last year's practice and previous years to that. And we're seeing that in the early information that we're receiving through our assessments, that that is having a significant impact on our students, especially our students with disabilities. We are enjoying switching over to the next generation science standards. And again, Alyssa's help in that has been amazing. She comes in, she's always running around with, you know, cookie sheets and beans and all sorts of things, because if she knows the lesson's going off, she wants to make sure the tools are in their hands. And the teachers, when the tools are in their hands and the lesson plans have been planned, it, it's all that more probable that those lessons are going to occur in the classroom. So you need to have all those things happening behind the scenes. The ISP program, which is the Integrated Support Program that Kathy talked about that started at the LOL, it's a continuation on from what was already happening in the middle school and the high school, but those kids were being identified in our district and some of those kids were staying in our district, others were leaving our district. I think now with the approach that we have, we're able to really focus it, really getting the, those needs for those students. It's a very specialized program. What we do in that room is very different from what we do in other rooms in our building. However, the academic rigor is not being diminished inside that classroom. The academics that are being delivered are the same academics that are being delivered in all of the, the Gen Ed setting. And those students are taking those same assessments and working with the same curriculum at our Gen Ed setting. So right now, I'm pretty proud of that program. It's kind of, and I'm, I think we're looking to possibly split the program to be more of a primary grade with a little bit of an upper elementary grade for next year if, if it warrants the enrollment. FLESS, again, that's been just a wonderful program. Ms. McCready does a phenomenal job. She walks through and stays in character all day. So she does not come out of her finished speaking mode, which is wonderful. So those are our accomplishments. There are many more, but again, there's just so much going on right now, and you've already heard so many other good things. So some of the things that we are looking to, this budget to support for the upcoming year, the broaden the balanced literacy program, really to expand, oops, sorry. Thanks. I'm not good like this. The one thing. Do I need another one? To, to expand and broaden our already growing balanced literacy program and really getting the coaching from TLA to go into new areas of the building, along with helping kind of foster some leadership within the teachers that were exposed to that training this year. Continue, so we're going to continue with TLA. We're going to expand the foundations phonics. We're going to expand, you know, the classroom libraries with a focus on nonfiction because, you know, that is an area of weakness in our libraries currently. Math, we want to further the curriculum alignment. We want to continue the class coaching and target, target professional development, TenMarkz, implementation of the Common Assessments across the district. And then iReady would also kind of come into this role of using that data to drive instruction. And then science, making sure that we've implemented the units that were prepared this year and further kind of develop and strengthen those units into next year. Again, co-teaching, we are, like I said, we have five full classrooms that are co-taught with a special educator all day. We were going to, we are expanding that to seven classrooms for next year. And then the, there'll be other co-taught classrooms, not with special educators, but with ESL teachers. We're going to be implementing the universal assessment tool, which I think is really going to help us focus in on what is working well in our core instruction and where do we still further have to go to strengthen. And then ISP, again, possibly there's, we'll be expanding the program, but if we're not expanding the program, we'll just continue to further develop the program and the roles of that program. FLESS will grow into grade two. Tier two instruction, I think this is a real area that I want to focus specifically on next year. And it's really trying to, after we're able to get some information about our core instruction and how effective it is, but actually try to grow and strengthen our tier instruct, tier two instruction, talk about who's delivering it, what the materials are for that instruction, and really try to come up with a systematic approach to how children kind of are tiered inside the building and how they move through those tiers in, as well. And then we're also with my school council and with the, with the LOL volunteer committee there. The LOL school has a community volunteers. It's a very robust program of volunteers that work to support the teachers. And we're looking to collect data and how that somehow has a direct improve, effect on actual, the parent engagement of our community volunteers. How is that strengthening the work that happens in our classroom and what effect does it have on the learners? So they're actually collecting their own data, but we're trying to use that and try to also further expand their roles. They're working very much in our libraries, in our community gardens. They do a ton of work behind the scenes for each of the teachers. So we want to just kind of keep that going and strengthen our community.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
That's a great program, and I love the model. I've talked to your parents in your school about, that organized it. And I wonder how we can replicate that, kind of engrave it into the culture of the other schools, because it's very much part of the culture of your school. And I think it's so beneficial. So I just wonder, like, how can we take, take a look at that program and, and replicate it in the other elementary schools so that it's, it's kind of part of what happens and part of the school culture?
I, I do think it lives with the desire of a leader in that. And they have always benefited from a very strong leader in that, prior to Julie Candyello, who's there now, who's very strong. I also think I've heard the previous leaders have been really fabulous. It's really not take a no for an answer, putting people on the spot and utilizing everybody in any way that they can inside the classroom, outside the classroom, before school, after school. Now they even have readers at the doors helping the kids out of the cars. I mean, they just, they just, they're always looking for areas, but I do think that it's not so much me going after them, they're really coming after me. So it's trying to find the right person who really wants that role and then getting them and setting them off into your community. But I'm sure she would talk more about it.
Yeah, no, I've, I'm interested in ways that we can, parents can be more supportive in, you know, whether it's greeting, you know, greeting or helping at lunch or, you know, doing things that are inside the school that are, are beneficial for the school and for the culture. And, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but it's, it's a great model.
Yeah. All right. So I'll get to our wants, and then some of the things that were, we took a critical eye to. So, you know, after having been in both a school the size of the Cunafin, been in a school the size of the Hosmer, I found myself in a school the size of LOL. And this year, it has been a challenge with the amount of administrative duties to be able to act as the, the leader, educational leader in one regard, and also kind of keep all those little things that have to get done behind the scenes all done. A lot of the responsibilities have been shared between the administrator and the guidance department. And so sometimes they're working on too much administration of, of things such as MCAS or other details, helping out in the get process. They're, they're leading that charge right now, where I think that it might be more suited to have somebody outside of that role, kind of leading the get process. And so that's why the assistant principal has been put in there. I think that it really warrants it, being the size of the school in the, in this current age of what's really the demands are for getting work done.
Also proposing to increase the size of the school soon.
Right, yes. So again, classroom libraries, to expand the libraries. I think that it's probably something we're going to be working on year after year over time. We're looking for every way to get more materials into the classroom, because as we have all of our students staying in the classroom, so do the needs expand and the amount of reading materials that are effective for each of those reading levels, so that we're, we're reaching broader, or we have a larger continuum of readers inside the room. And I think that also needs to support our ESL population. So again, there's always a need for more text. The regular education classroom, you know, teacher, that is a reduction that would be coming up. And it appears that it is, it's not going to negatively affect us in this next coming school year. And then the, the half guidance, I think it really kind of like being able to take over the, all of those administrative roles, like the MCAS, the get process, watching and supporting the data and the data grids, which a lot of that work now is going, really being put on the teachers to take over those roles instead of having it run by guidance. These are all things that are going to come off the plate of the guidance department, which will give them focused area to actually serve the students in the needs and in the ways that they were intended to serve. And then the assistant principal should be working on more of those administrative aspects and then also supporting the students, because that, having another body that is not assigned to a classroom, who is really there to support the children's learning, can, can actually go to the classroom and do some, you know, in, in the classroom support, do some kind of just chatting with the kids and get them back on track. So I, I do think that we're not going to experience a loss in that area as far as from a student support perspective.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
Is there consist, so we have Hosmer and then the LOL, next year we'll have an assistant principal. Is there consistency about what the, that job description is and what that role is throughout the district? Or is this, is that it? The same thing?
Does it?
No, I know, I'm just, I'm wanting, like, are other roles, are, are you envisioning the role of your assistant principal being similar to what it is? I don't know. And I just wonder if it.
I, I mean, I don't know exactly what responsibility Mrs. Fitzpatrick has taken on, but again, she's been there for a while. So some of those responsibilities, she's been able to acquire over time, probably a little bit more expansive than who I, what I see actually happening right away next year if the person isn't from our community. And I also think that because the size of the school and the guidance and some of the other factors are a little bit still out of balance, I don't know that the role is going to be able to be completely equal. But my intent is to sit down with Bob and Mary Kate and kind of, kind of find out what does she do? And then how can we take some of the things that we want to take away from our guidance? And that's really going to be the crux of where we focus our energies, that trying to create the, the role in LOL's need.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah. And I think, I didn't have any unfunded budget. I can go back if everyone needs that overview.
But it was the never going bonus.
Oh, am I going over to the sales side of the syllabus? An early step, all right.
Early step.
So just when you thought you were done. This will be super quick, because a lot of it is very repetitive to what I presented during Kathy's timeframe. But here's just an outline of the enrollment of early steps. And sometimes the number of fluctuates a little bit, more so because of the students turning three that are referred through either early intervention or that do come to us. That changes drastically from year to year. And also, sometimes we have a mass exodus of kids going up to kindergarten, which then opens up a lot more space either for our community children or for our special ed children, who then we do take some time to fill some of those spots throughout the year. Preschool is one of those programs that does have a continuous rolling enrollment. And so from one day to the next, you never know how many students you're going to have showing up, which is also very exciting for all of us, too.
Before you go on to the next slide.
Sure.
The auditorium, the total ninety-three is really one oh eight.
Okay. Thank you.
It did look very odd, you know?
It might not be additive because substantially separate and folder, there might be older after.
Okay.
Um, no.
I was assuming one twelve, one seventeen.
They're different.
Okay. Oh, that's, oh.
Teenage.
Ah, okay. Yep.
No mind.
Good catch.
Made a verse of three hours.
There we go. I'm so glad you're here.
That was pretty impressive.
So the accomplishments, again, are just to reiterate what we said earlier today, the get process for students that are in the general ed setting for us, the implementation of the tiered systems of support, and then also the professional development of the IAs as well as the teachers. So continuing all of that. And so for the recommended budget, as we mentioned earlier, would be to add on the PM session of our half-day class at this particular time for the teacher and for the two IAs that are currently assigned for that, that classroom. And really to be able to increase the opportunities for families who have expressed an interest in the full-day program or who are waitlisted for the pre-kindergarten program to have an alternative setting for them to go to. It wouldn't be the same amount of time as the pre-kindergarten at this particular time, but it would be a longer day than just the eleven twenty or the eleven fifty to two twenty timeframe. So again, looking at what we've already discussed for some of our recommended budgets. So the point two for the admin assistant, the preschool teacher, point five, the one point O, which is really adding on to the two additional assistants that we have. The reductions, looking at the administrative assistant, there is currently what is considered the family outreach coordinator at the preschool. So looking at that reduction of the point five, the ESL teacher, and then the resume, revenue offset as well. So that's what we would be looking at.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So preschool and pre-K, if you combine them, is that, is that budget neutral? And is it self-sustaining?
Pre-kindergarten is, I haven't run that analysis this year, but pre-kindergarten is essentially self. So we charge off the salary of the pre-K teacher and the IA in that pre-K program to completely one hundred percent to the revolving fund. Preschool is different because there are some general ed, some typical peers, as well as special ed. So the budget, school budget absorbs some expenditure related to special ed, but we can charge off.
Offsets.
For that portion of the expense that's for the general ed students.
Okay. So we don't know, is that, is that close to self-sustaining or?
I think it's pretty close, yes. I think we said we were going to look at that next year at like fee time and try to think about a regular increase in that towards.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Just before Tom says anything, is the addition there, is it, shouldn't it be different? Shouldn't it be point seven? Isn't, aren't you subtracting?
At which one?
Oh, yeah.
The FTEs.
The FTE at the bottom.
Yeah, we just missed the point.
It should be basically point seven.
Point seven.
That point seven.
The FTE is up. I think the dollar, the dollar amount is, is correct, though.
And, and just one point about the ESL, again, that ESL reduction is not, it, it might end up being overall looking at the district level. One thing that we do know with ESL at preschool, actually, it's not, it's not a requirement, but we do it, which is great. So what we're thinking of is having that support maybe being Hosmer and preschool, so having the teacher, you know, picking up some of the Hosmer as well as the preschool and not just having the one dedicated. So it's not like we're cutting out all ESL, because there, there is only just a point five, but we're not cutting out all ESL from preschool. We're just simply saying that we think that there might be resources at the Hosmer that can do the preschool work. So.
I think that all of preschool is language development.
Yes.
So, yes.
Great.
And so those salary lines, those salary lines from the Hosmer that you saw, with all those big deficits, those are all moved over here. So particularly, you see those hive, you know, four hundred thousand, two hundred thousand changes, because there was, there was nothing there. was, there was nothing there in the prior years.
Oh, that's a secondary. So there you go.
All right. Great, thank you all very, very much. We really appreciate it. It was very informative. We'll move on to budget, future budget independence committee, SLC committee meetings. We have one tomorrow night at six thirty, pending snow.
The forecast has gotten better.
It's gotten better. Okay, so we'll assume we're here tomorrow night, six thirty PM, and it will be secondary schools budget. And busing. Motion to adjourn. Hold on a favor. The eyes have it.